President.
Councilmember Felshaw.
President.
Councilmember Samuel, he's here, not sure where, and Councilmember Neil.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. City Manager, I'm going to turn this over to you to lead this workshop, if you will.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Once again, good to be here to talk budget. That might sound strange to some of you, but it's one of the more exciting times of the year where we plan for the future of our city for the next year, for sure. We have staff here today. I think we have a few Baptists at the back of the room, back there. They're all sitting at the back and trying to stand it away, but they'll be up talking to you today. Basically, today, we're going to start talking about putting together a financial plan for the city for the year 24, 25. It's looking at basically defining our revenues and expenses, determining a path forward, for sure. You know, it's about establishing priorities, establishing goals, and what we're doing with limited dollars. Cities don't have an unlimited amount of money, so we have discussions and talk, and then we come up with a plan on the priorities established by council and staff. Next. 2024 budget, quickly, I'm just going to give a quick overview. Last year, we worked on the budget and the things we talked about, one of the main things we wanted to talk about was transparency. So we wanted to put a process in place to work with council, where city council had the ability to have input at upfront, you know, quality is better when you have input upfront and trying to fix things on the back end. So that was a part of the process. Likewise, having those discussions with staff. And today, we're going to want to hit your goals and priorities for this particular budget for 24, proposed budget for 24, 25. We incorporated strategic plan. It wasn't quite finished, I found last year, but we did take some of the items out of that document and incorporated them to the 2024 budget, which helped us identify goals. Six, five-year CIP. The city's used CIP processes in the past, but we did a more encompassing process last year, and it's going to be the gist of our meeting today. So we're going to talk about each project that's in there today and have council provide their input on those projects. CIP, it's a moving target. It's a estimate of what we want to do in the future. Only the year, existing year that you designate a budget of those projects in it, for sure. It's a change in an ever-moving document. Employee compensation study, last year, and classification study, that was the first year of a three-year plan. We're looking to get in equity with our employees. And I put before you a copy of the actual file report. I don't think you ever got this. So this is a copy of the file report on the compensation and classification study. When you have an opportunity, you can peruse it and have an opportunity to look at it, for sure. And again, the second, this will be the second year of that plan and looking at compensation adjustments there. And then last year, we did a comprehensive water and sewer rate study, which was a five-year plan on water and water rates. And it's built around the CIP. You look at your infrastructure projects, and this is basically gives you a way, a ability to describe how you're going to fund these infrastructure projects. Then supplemental requests, those are new things, sort of new things that came in last year. So we put that in. Next slide. Financial challenges for 2025. You know, we, at the end, during the budget process last year, we were very clear that there were going to be challenges this year. So we'll be facing those challenges head-on. But once we get ready for council approval budget, we'll have a budget that meets the requirements of the city as far as regulatory standards as identified by the charter and adopted by financial policy and doing that. We'll be working on the budget, you know. At this point in our budget, we are having some declining revenues, some decline in revenues with hot tax and decline in revenues. I say declining, they're just below projections. Sales tax and property tax, but we're ever optimistic that we'll be able to do the things we'll need to do to have a balanced budget. And the definition of balance can, has changed because I know Taylor's going to hold me accountable to that statement. Then providing existing and new services, you know, our citizens get used to a level of service of what we do and what we deliver, for sure. But there are also new services that we'll be needing to look at and put in place. So we just need to be able to serve the operational needs of our citizens and what they expect and what we're able to deliver. And God make needed reduction, zero-based budget, and I'll talk about that a little bit on the next slide coming up. But then we also look at identifying new sources of revenue. You know, we'll be looking at cutting things, but we'll be coming to you as a council to consider some new sources of revenue. Next slide. 2025 budget standards, a lot of it's the same as 2024. Transparency, again, will be at the top of the list. That's why we're having this meeting today. We're starting out with you, with city council, coming and establishing your goals and priorities and communicating those to us. You know, of course, we can't fund them all, but we know, as we make those decisions and get the budget into shape, that we know what your priorities are, and we work toward those goals. And we'll be working on toward the strategic plan, but not only our strategic plan. We'll be looking at the economic development plan because there are some things that this council wants to do in the downtown area and other places. And as we put together this budget and as for this year, but also getting the plan for the future, you know, five years out. But of course, we remain fiscally responsible. That's our number-one goal, is to remain fiscally responsible. We want to have a good, fiscally responsible tax rate. When we do that, we want to make sure that our fees are in line with our city and our people. And then we just, staff goals, as far as the budget standards, that staff has identified some things that the city needs or we think that we need, and we'll be talking about those. Some 2025 highlights, before you, you have a budget preparation manual. This is first year we put this together. So the first thing we did when we started working on this budget, Finance created Emmanuel. June, his people put together Emmanuel with instructions on how they are to put together a budget, how everybody, the different parts of the process, includes a calendar. It's a manual on how this budget's going to be put together. And you, Hacks Council got this yet? No, yeah, they don't have. But it's basically provides a roadmap on how we're going to prepare this budget. It's give clear direction to staff and everyone on how this process will work. Zero-based budgeting. We talked about this last year, and we realized that we were going to be looking at a possible challenging budget for this year. We came up with the philosophy that we were going to come back with a zero-based budget. That's zero-based budget, and it's basically what it says, it starts from zero. In the past, departments got what they, they got the same amount that they got the year before, then add it to it. This basically, you get nothing, you just justify whatever you're asking for. You justify everything, dollar you're asking for, through an itemization process. So it's a good way to go back and recover things. It's a good way to identify processes you don't need anymore or use anymore, and you spend money on and things. So it's a good way to have great accountability for a budget and make sure that what you're spending is justified. Open Gov, that's a budgeting software. Okay, yes, sir.
If we're going to go, Councilman Turner had a question that he wanted to ask.
For me, it's more of understanding, when we say zero-based budget and we're justifying these budgets, who are these budgets being justified to, and who will say yes or no, who will finalize these things? Is it something that's presented to you, then it's presented to council, or it just stops at you?
Yes, they're in top, it's all the way, the process goes all the way through. Basically, you know, it's submitted, the request to finance, and finance will evaluate things to make sure things are in line with what we require in this manual, you know, and what's there. Then after that point, I will have meetings with each department head, and we'll sit down and go over their budgets, myself and administrative staff, Chris, June, with them, for sure. Then at some point, you get to see that budget, you know, for sure. Now, you won't go over every penny. You'd be here, you won't ever leave this place. But we want to be able to do it in such a place that when it gets to you, you'll be able to, it'll be evident of what we've done and what we've looked at and changed.
Mike, if you'll turn on your mic.
Well, we'll be getting a copy of that budget preparation manual that June prepared so that we, as a council, can understand the process the department heads go through.
Sure, we can share it with you.
Thank you.
And then budgeting software. In last year's budget, you approved that budgeting software. It's called Open Gov, and it's a paperless budgeting process. We won't be dependent on spreadsheets and papers anymore. It's instantaneous. We input, the department heads, staff can input information directly to the software. And we had training. We went through a couple of levels of training with all of the people who will be dealing with the budget, and it's going to be a much better process with budgeting software, where when you input things, it makes instantaneous changes throughout the budget. You don't have to go to 10 different places and change numbers and things like that. So this is a, it's now, you know, it's now, and budgeting software. We were talking about yesterday about AI and city getting better processes and intelligence and data processes in place, and this is one of them that'll do that. A master fee schedule. We're going to put together a master fee schedule where we'll have one document that will have every fee that the city charges on that, in that document. And that fee schedule will be eventually approved by this council in a separate action. So you won't have to search for fees and what's that. You'll have one document you look at. You can look at every fee that the city charges on there. So it's going to be a master fee schedule that'll be readily available for citizens. They could find online somewhere, or you can have as a hard copy document. This budget will meet GFOA standards. It continues to do some things because of some of the ways we prepared the budget before and some things we put in place to improve it. It's going to meet more GFOA standards, General Finance Officers Association standards. And the five-year CIP, which you're going to hear about today, most of the discussions today along with your telling us priorities and goals, will be the five-year CIP. It's going to be a pretty comprehensive report on that. And I already touched on strategic planning a bit, but also in this document, it includes a budget meeting calendar, overall calendar. It's even in this document here, overall calendar. And you have every date that we'll take an action or do something from now through approval in August. And that's my quick overview from here. I think we're going to get started with the CIP, and Bart Coeack will come in, start that conversation.
Good morning. Go over a little bit of the highlights on the CIP. The charter requires the manager to prepare and submit to council a five-year CIP prior to the final date for submission of the budget. This is new this year. The old charter previously stated that the CIP was to be submitted to council 90 days prior to the final date of the submission of the budget. So we'll work with council from this point forward on CIP, but that'll be presented, and I think it's August 2nd, I have it on a subsequent slide. The capital program shall include a clear general summary of the contents, a list of all capital improvements that are proposed to be undertaken during the five fiscal years that are to come, with appropriate supporting information as to the necessity of such improvements. There'll be cost estimates, method of financing, a recommended time schedule for each improvement. The above information may be revised and extended each year with regard to these capital improvements still pending or in process of construction or acquisition. So basically, in short, anything in years two through five can change. The next year, year one, is pretty much locked in through this budget process and appropriated, but two to five can shift around. General obligation bonds require an election, so that's one of our funding methods. You'll see that when we get down to the details of the spreadsheets, we've got it color-coded in terms of whether it's a general obligation bond, a certificate of obligation, whether it's grant funding, or whether it's funded by some other method. So the proposed election date currently for the general obligation bond is November 2025. So that has to go to the voters for approval, and then after they approve, we'd go out for the funding on those. In general, only the first year of the CIP plan is actually appropriated. So everything you're seeing in years two to five is proposed. We don't actually have funding in hand for it, for the most part. There are some exceptions. There are large projects like Riverfront, Colliers Ferry Pump Station that span multiple years. But if the project hasn't started yet and it's in years two through five, the funding's generally not there yet. So the organization of the five-year CIP document remains the same. So you have a copy of the proposed, it says draft on the front, looks remarkably similar to the existing 24 to 28 CIP that was published. The structure remains the same, table of contents, executive summary, summary roll-up, charts, CIP worksheets, CIP policies and procedures, and the definitions and acronyms that are used throughout the document are defined at the end. We get a number of benefits by having a five-year community investment plan. So it has, this contains our long-term community vision and planning for our capital needs, improvements, and maintenance. We're, we have the ability to incorporate our needs from other planning documents. City Manager mentioned the strategic plan, which is heavily referenced while we're building the CIP. We also have the pavement condition study that's used for evaluating all of the roads. We have the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan currently being worked on. And we also have a proposed sidewalk master plan and comprehensive plan, which are currently awaiting funding. It explains to residents and future residents how it will increase their quality of life. It increases transparency by identifying projects and funding, and it allows us to be able to project our cash flow, impact on operating budget, what we need in terms of future water sewer rate increases and our tax rate projections. Yes, sir.
Bart, would you compare and contrast the difference between the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan?
I'm going to punt to Mr. Boone because I know the comprehensive plan much better than I do.
I'll, Councilman, I'll start with the comprehensive plan, which your comprehensive plan is traditionally more of a physical plan for what you want the city to develop as, looking out 20, 30, 40 years into the future. And so that's your starting point. In other words, where do you want the roads to go? What do you want the land use to be? Where do you want the parks to be, et cetera? And so from that, you kind of build your zoning ordinance off of that. It doesn't have to be exact, but you want to approximate what that land use plan is through your zoning ordinance, so you can implement where residential uses go, where commercial uses go, et cetera, where your roads go. And then likewise, you want your CIP to also reflect that long-term plan, physical plan, so that if you say, look, we want, you know, a particular road like Delaware to keep going out further, you know, you eventually want your CIP to reflect that. So comprehensive plan is more of a physical, long-range plan. Strategic plan is more of, although it is long-range because you have big projects in it, it tends to be also the three-to-five-year initial plan, but again, looking out long-term. So they all work hand-in-hand. Your strategic plan, of course, is, as we went through that exercise last year with council and staff, to really dig into, you know, what should our work be over the coming years? So they all, they all need to work hand-in-hand, but they're a little bit different.
When was the last time the comprehensive plan was?
2002.
Thank you for asking that, because that was my next question. And the, also, following up on that, you said there's no funding right now for the comprehensive plan. Is that, did I hear you correctly on that?
It is not currently funded. So we're looking for a grant for that one?
Correct. We've applied to the General Land Office for some mitigation planning funding, which could be used for the comprehensive plan.
So in summary, we have not had a new comprehensive plan in over 20 years, and we don't have one funded yet.
A new one, yes, sir.
For a new one. And so I think it's self-evident that that's a problem. So as we go forward, we might want to look at sources of funding because without a plan, you're just kind of meandering. And you need to have a plan, in my view.
So the next slide, Tina. This gives our layout of dates for next steps. So we're in the budget work session today. We'll have the presentation of the CIP next to council, get your input. We'll allow you to have some time to identify FY25 priorities that you may have. May 23rd next week is our second budget work session to go over key budget items. July 23rd is the third budget work session. Council will review the draft budget, and you'll have department presentations at that time. August 2nd, the city manager's presentation of budget to council. Council resolutions to receive the proposed 25 budget and the five-year CIP. September 3rd is the public hearing on the 25 budget and an ordinance adopting that budget. And with that, I will turn it over to Kenneth Regette, who will start going over the community investment plan, beginning with parks.
Kenneth, come forward. What we're going to do with this CIP plan, you're going to have each department director come and talk about their part, their part of the CIP, and talk about the projects that's been.
Good morning. The athletic complex, rehabilitation of parking lots in Eagle Brick Drive, certificate of obligation bond for 2025 at a cost of 1.5 million. The athletic complex contains four parking lots and is accessed by Eagle Brick Drive. The asphalt pavement of the parking lots and roads have reached the end of their useful life and have many pavement failures. The project will mix and stabilize eight inches worth of base and overlay with two inches of asphalt pavement for the parking lots. Eagle Brick Drive is a composite road section consisting of concrete panels with an asphalt overlay. Rehabilitation of the road will repair the affected concrete panels, then mill and overlay the concrete with two inches of asphalt. Any questions? Community park in Ward One, a general obligation bond for 2027, 2028, a total cost of $3,833,000. Construct a new community park at a proposed location in Ward One. Possible amenities for the park shall include walking paths, picnic shelters, restroom facility, playground equipment, and a small splash pad. Community Park in the South End, another general obligation bond for 2026, 2027, at an estimated cost of $3,833,000. Construct a new community park at a proposed location in the south end of the city, possibly near Theodore John's Library. Possible amenities shall include picnic shelters, playground equipment, restroom facility, a small splash pad, open space for athletic fields, and walking paths. Yes?
All right, so, love you, man, but don't you already have two community parks in the South End, Alice Keith and Terrell Park? Okay.
Excuse me, council. So these two parks that are in the five-year CIP, they were in the CIP last year, in the current CIP. We are starting the process of the Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan. So although they're shown in the CIP, as we mentioned earlier, years two through five are just for planning purposes. So these can change. Once we have the focus groups and the steering committee and hear from the people in the community, these particular parks may change, or the community may ask for parks in a different area of town. So again, this is not set in stone.
And I appreciate that, Jim, because we are going through this Parks Comprehensive Master Plan, and, you know, they may identify different locations, and that's what I'm hearing from you. Okay, thank you.
Chris?
I just want to tell Mike, this, where he's talking about the John's Library, this is something that I've been looking into since I've been on council, already spoken to the people that own the property. We actually have a plan, well, a preliminary plan, nothing final, for that area. So this is not something that they just pulled out of the loop.
But we'll, that'll be put forward, I guess, as part of the comprehensive parks study. That'll incorporate whatever work has already been done on that.
The only thing I'd like to add is I'm super excited about this community park plan because much like the sidewalk, oftentimes, as we sit up here, we hear about needs, but it's nice to see the data supporting that in terms of population density and how much, because we certainly have population all over the city and we have parks, but, you know, some parks use more, some use less, how we can increase usage. And I'm assuming that that's the type of information that will be provided in that Parks Master Plan. And certainly, the council can deviate from it, but much like any sidewalk plan, we're at least having some professionals along with staff overview telling us where we're going to get our biggest bang for the buck. And certainly, though, being in conversation with the people of your ward is a great way to do that, because I would imagine that information also comes into play in the, in the community investment plan for the parks.
Also, is it still in play, or have there been any more talks with BISD as far as getting that old price elementary school property and putting a small community park there?
I have not spoken to them again about it.
Yeah, I don't know if there've been other talks. We did an assessment of that building, and the initial early assessment, it wasn't feasible for the city at Beaumont. It was really expensive proposition. It had some mitigation issues with asbestos and a lot of things going on there. So if the school district was willing to work with this more on some So, so if, if the school district was willing to work with this more on some things, it would be feasible for us, but the early assessment, it wasn't.
It would be better if they demolished it, cleaned it up, and then gave it to us.
That would help, for sure.
All right, and then we have the Rogers Park Picnic Pavilion. Came out of our operating funds for 2024 at a cost of $200,000. Construct a new 44 by 30-foot metal picnic pavilion at Rogers Park. The picnic pavilion shall include lights, 110-volt receptacles, picnic tables, trash receptacles, and concrete accessible sidewalk. Estimated start date is August the 5th, and it'll be located near the splash pad, near the parking lot on dialing between the library and the park.
I thought that was done already.
Not the pavilion.
It's probably, I mean, at Rogers Park?
Rogers Park, no. Haven't started construction yet. Will be until August.
The one at Sprout looks really nice. I saw it Friday during the trash pickup.
Any questions?
I believe.
Me for now, because we got our Parks Master Plan that's going to give us our next 10 years, our blueprint.
Well, that, that's great. So my question is for '25, '26, are we still, do we still have the same Parks budget? Is that something you guys are trying to do away until the Parks Master Plan is complete?
I think it's too early in the process, council member. You know, we're just beginning, so we don't know what that number's going to look like yet. By the next meeting, we'll be able to tell you, give you a great idea of what that's going to look like, for sure. I, I think it's too early to tell.
Okay, that's fair. And the last question, Mr. Kennedy, I know you said data collected, you know, to see the community parks. I'd be interested from the consultants to know how we're collecting this, this data, and to whom are we collecting it from? I think it's great they're collecting it, but I've seen in the past when we've done some of these studies, we weren't really specific in what we asked for, and we pay all this money. It's not on you, because this is your, you're just starting it, but we paid all this money and we asked questions, and some of those questions were unanswered. So I think it's very important that when we're doing this community parks, we really pay attention to the people who live in these areas, these neighborhood associations. I wanted to go beyond the committee appointments, because, I mean, they're, they're already there, they're present, some of these people have been asking, and I think we would get more support if they were more engaged and involved with the process.
Well, the consultants that, that are coming in, they'll actually hold community events. So even if you're not, say, chosen for the focus group or steering committee, everyone in the city will have an opportunity to voice their opinions on what they would like to see inside of the parks and basically the future for our park system.
Yes, sir. And the focus groups and steering committees, is it our Parks Committee, or there'll be something additional on top of the Parks Committee?
Additional.
Okay, thank you. And you would pick them, or would the council pick them?
We'll make some suggestions. I might defer over to Mr. Williams about that. We came up with a list of names, and they'll be shared with council at some times, and then we can get everything together and make the process smooth.
Okay, I appreciate it. And the beautification looks a lot better throughout the city as well, so thank you for that.
Appreciate that. It's coming along.
But Mr. Williams, when in this process do present ideas that I've had from people asking me about as far as park improvements?
As far as the park comprehensive plan, that'd be during that part of the process, whether they get individual interviews or come to the public hearings, or they could come directly from you.
They give them to me.
Okay, well, we can take that input and put into our comments for the comprehensive plan with, with half and associates. It's a firm out of Houston that's doing this study, half and associates, that they're well-known around the country, and they've done good, they do good work.
Councilman Getz?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, so I'm just going to ask. One of my goals is to try to clean this community up, especially with the unwarranted bandit signs that are all over the city of Beaumont. And I've talked to the city attorney, and I think we're both in agreement that as long as we have a uniform policy, regardless of whether or not they're candidate signs, or we buy house signs, or do pressure washing signs, if our policy is that we're not going to allow these to be put in our city ride subway, our easements, and that we're going to pick them up, is this the appropriate time to discuss that, since that might come under the Parks Department, or would that be at some other time?
And that's, it's a great time for me to give an update. In our department head meeting yesterday, we discussed this, as, as during the last council meeting, and I agreed with you that this was an issue. So in our department head meeting yesterday, we discussed this, and we've, and I gave staff instructions that we're going to enforce the bandit sign. So it's going to be a priority, and it is a priority for us, and we talked with the departments, whether it's Ken and his group or code enforcement, we will be working on that. So council won't be surprised. It's, it's a priority for city staff at this point that we talked about yesterday, and we've come up with a strategy to do it.
And I only mention it because if it is going to involve the hiring of additional employees or even part-time employees to accomplish this, we're going to have to budget for that. So I don't know if your thought is that we can do it with existing staff and employees, or if we need to budget to hire additional?
Well, we're, we're going to try to do it with the existing staff first and see how that looks, but we think we can do it with existing staff at this point, but we'll know more as we get more information.
Thank you, and thank you sincerely. That would be great.
You're welcome.
And the last thing, I just got a text from a citizen out, out watching. Parks Master Plan, do we have a projected finish date? Because I, I know, you know, parks been an exciting topic, this council has made a priority with funding, with actions over words. So I know we're kind of in a point where it's hard to invest money into parks when we know we have a master plan. So do we have a projected?
It's going to take about a year for completion.
Year from now?
Yes, yes.
From May of '25?
Well, we already started it, so is that, what we started already included?
We've, we've only met twice.
Oh, Lord.
So we still have a ways to go.
Can't get them a tighter timeline than that to work faster?
Yeah, you could, you could, but it, it's a pretty intensive process. You know, we, we could make, ask them to go faster, but it, it's, it's a pretty comprehensive process.
And the one thing I've seen with the city, and I feel Councilman Turner's frustration, but I also realize when you're interacting with an entire city, if you don't give a good amount of time, then people also feel excluded from the process. And a year, I know feels like a long time, but at the end of the day, the amount of money we're going to be spending for our parks, hopefully, we'll, we'll get our biggest bang for the buck.
We'll see where things can be sped up, council member, with the half and associates, we'll have that conversation with them.
And it appears we have our youngest in attendance today as well.
He not feeling no year.
All right.
Good morning, everyone. I apologize for my voice. Apparently, when it gets warm, my body gets really cold. Do you have the slides in front of you for the, each individual item that's listed? Do you guys have those or no?
Yeah, it's in there. Yes.
Okay, because that's what I'm going to do, is kind of go over those so you can see them. If you look at the seven items listed under Recreation, only one of them is new. It's the, the golf course driving range net.
That's what you're talking about, Jim?
Yes, sir.
This is what you're talking about.
That'll make you on the same page.
And your report, your community investment plan draft, you have a page for each project that looks like this.
Page 13.
That way you can look at it kind of while we're going over it, so you get an idea, and I don't just have to bore you with reading it the entire time. Everyone straight? So we'll begin with the pickleball courts. So this is something that, again, was, was in the plan, we put it in last year. We need six new pickleball courts at the tennis center. There's, there's a large open space sort of in between the pro shop and the, and the backside courts. This will give us six standalone pickleball courts, which we really need. Presently, our, our courts are all multi-use, tennis and pickleball, just you have tennis court, put lines on them, put your temporary nets up, and this would kind of give a little bit of separation, which is definitely necessary. We could, we could probably use more, but six will be really good in the meanwhile. Secondly, the next thing you'll see is a front nine restroom facility. Okay?
Just want to tell you that I have received so many calls from the pickleball community to echo what you just said about the need for these pickleball courts. It's the fastest-growing sport in America, and it is crazy how, how many people are out there.
I warned you guys years ago, you all just didn't believe me.
Well, I, I believe you, and, you know, it's, it's going to be something that is extremely well-received, so appreciate you putting that in the budget.
Yeah, it's, you know, I got a lot of weird looks when I started talking pickleball about four or five years ago, and, and when I first read it, I gave weird looks, but it's, you should be sick of me talking about it. So this, this is definitely needed, and if we can get this done, that'll be very important and something we really, really need. So the next item on the list is a front nine restroom facility. The front nine does not have a restroom currently. If we did, we wouldn't need to build a new one. So what you see in that rendering is not exactly what it's going to look like. This is just something we pulled, this is something that facilities maintenance put together, just kind of a mock-up of what a type of restroom will look like. This, this cost $480,000. That can vary, could, could probably go a little, little bit down, but that's not really my area of expertise as far as knowing how the, the buildings are constructed and what the costs are going to be. But it's definitely something that we need for that side of the golf course. The next item on the list, you see the athletic complex, Complex Four Field Conversion. Again, something we talked about last year quite a bit. This would be upgrading Complex Four, which is currently three softball fields, to make them larger to where we can play baseball. You'd still be able to play softball on them. Anytime you, you make these fields larger, you can still play fast pitch softball, slow pitch softball, which we use during the week. But this would give us the opportunity to host 14 through 18-year-old baseball, which is something the city really needs. It's something that we presently do not have, and it could be a, a huge addition. You see the cost of $6.5 million. That's not something that we just have lying around, but it is something that, that if we can make that happen, we'll, we'll make that money back, I can assure you, with the amount of events that we would host.
I would love for us to be able to get some projections on the revenue that would be generated from this, because I know I've had several people reach out to me about the need and about the amount of revenue, but it's usually just their projections. But if we can have somewhat of an, you know, in a independent projection so that we can, because some things will help pay for itself in a shorter amount of time, is what I'm trying to point out.
Yeah, and I think with something like this too, Mayor, CVB is going to be very important as far as that goes, because obviously, you're looking at hosting tournaments. Ford Park has tournaments every single weekend, and CVB really is kind of the driving force behind that. They're going to know, as we've heard for years, heads and beds, you know, how many, how much tax dollars is generated from people coming in from out of town. And part of the discussion we had in our directors meeting yesterday is, as Manager Williams, you know, addressed a minute ago, as I forget how to speak, was some AI things, and, and possibly being able to utilize AI to really figure out where these people are coming from, what they're doing while they're here, and, and to really get, get us the opportunity to gather this information that we can try to utilize to better sort of sell you guys on, hey, this is what we can bring in from doing this at this complex. Obviously, if you do this, you're going to shut down these fields for a while. It wouldn't be a huge shock to our system, because if you remember, we had, we had a light fall down at Complex Four about two years ago, and so we shut down Complex Four. Essentially, it's been closed for a year and a half, a year, year and a half, so we, we know how to, to, to function without it. So if we decide to do this, it would definitely be good for us. Yes, sir.
Do we currently have fields that we use for baseball in the city, or are these just all softball fields right now?
They can play baseball on our fields at the athletic complex, it's just no one does. They're all dirt infields, and if you can play on turf or grass, you would prefer to play on those as opposed to an all-dirt infield.
Are we talking about pony colt baseball or some other type of baseball?
So Ford Park allows, it, it is essentially built for up to 12-year-olds. There's 13-year-olds that play out there, but they're playing on fields that were built for 12-year-olds, and it's, the, the games are not, it's not really good baseball, because you've got these gigantic kids hitting every ball over the fence. It's really, it would be designed for kind of the 13-plus. And if we do it the way that we've designed it, we would want to build it to where we could potentially host high school games, possibly bring in some other bigger, larger events that would typically go to Houston or Lake Charles or Tyler or anywhere else. So I've seen with my experience, obviously, as you guys recall, I was a high school baseball coach, I've seen schools in the Dallas area and Houston area, but I remember one, one instance in particular where this school in Dallas turfed their entire field. They did it in the spring, expecting to get their money back within two years. It was a very rainy spring, they made their money back by May 1st, because they were playing games seven days a week. On weekends, they were playing high school makeup games, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM Saturday, and then Sunday evenings. So it, it's there, it's definitely there, but right now in Beaumont, there's, there's no fields where you can really get 14 through 18-year-olds. The fences aren't long enough, the infield's aren't deep enough. This, this would give us that opportunity. With the footprint that we have, we may potentially have to build the wall really, really high in the outfield, or try to figure out a way to go over some drainage in the back on the ditch, but I think we can, we can find ways to do it if we really want to do it properly.
And again, when I was growing up, pony colt baseball was a real thing. Is that still something that exists?
Not really. I mean, kids that age still play, but it's not really called pony colt.
Select and that.
Select, and then you have a bunch of different variations of it. It's pretty much, unfortunately, from my perspective, pretty much everything is just tournament ball nowadays. It's not as much during the week competitive. That's kind of where Little League dies out at about 13, 14. So pretty much everybody just plays tournament ball. But again, these would give us the opportunity, which I think would be really cool, would be high school. You know, you, you could host a high school tournament. You could have a, a City of Beaumont High School Tournament, and instead of these teams going to Houston or going wherever else, we'd have three fields right there, and we could host probably three tournaments in the spring, and that's just going to have kids coming in three weeks in a row. It would be great.
Okay.
Next item on the list is, sir?
I have one question. These new fields, they'll be total turf, infield, outfield, everything? On the picture, it shows like dirt infield.
No, that's turf. That's turf on that picture, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that, that whole field is turf that you see there. That's, that would be our idea. As much as, we would love to turf the entire thing. The other option, obviously, turfing an entire field is going to cost a little more than turfing an infield, but if you turf the entire thing, you're not going to have to worry. The weather we had last night, you could have played. You know, you could have played on that, because it's going to drain, it's going to be built, designed properly. Right now, if you had grass outfield, you would have been iffy playing last night. There would have been puddles, you would have gone through 100 baseballs, and the people running the event would have, they would have lost some money. So ideally, we want to turf the entire thing. Next item on the list, you see a fitness court. This is something that I've asked for, for a few years, and we, we've, what we've done is, is there's an opportunity for a grant through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, which is up to $50,000. So you see 150 there, that's the estimated cost of the court. If we were to receive the grant, it would be about 100,000 out of our pocket. A year or two ago, when this was something that we were trying to push for, Emily and I talked about a location down kind of by the event center, behind the Rotary Playground as, as one option. I would think that another option could be even downtown, possibly riverfront, or even at the, at the new area here. Its location would be something that we would all determine, but this cost is, I don't think it's going to really be an issue where, where we put it. The cost is going to be the same. But if you can look on the, on the rendering, it's a really cool item, it's something we don't have in the city, and, and a lot of cities are doing these, and, and they're, they're very well utilized. And what I really like about it is you, you get to, it, it's, it's not for one group. It's not for this group, that group. You're going to get any type of citizen that wants to come and utilize this facility. It's just a really cool opportunity. I think it'd be great, great addition for the city. I think it'd be great, great addition for the city. Next item on the list, you see, um, course drainage improvements. So if you recall in last year's plan, the 1.4 million investment plan to Parks and Rec, we approved 125,000 for a drainage study. That drainage study is currently taking place. Well, obviously, when the study's complete, they're going to give us some ideas of what needs to be done. Um, I've met with the group, Bart's engineering group has met with them multiple times, and they're doing a lot of work, and when we're getting the rains that we've had for the last two weeks, it's very informative for them to come out and see where the, the water puddles up. So it was interesting, when I first met with them, um, the course designer told me that we have the second flattest golf course he's ever seen. I think he said that the largest amount of grade we had was 0.2%. That's not much. So, um, there's, there's a lot of drainage improvements that need to be done in order to get this golf course to stay open. As you know, when the course is dry, we get plenty of play. People love to play Hamburg, it gets tons of rounds. Well, when it rains, it's car path only, or it's closed, because we have no drainage capability. So after this drainage study is presented to us, they're going to offer, and this $3 million is kind of an estimate, and, and I told him, I said, hey, I don't need you going high-end, go crazy on me. So he, he tried to really, I don't say lowball it, but really try to tighten things up to where we could possibly get by with doing these improvements to really follow through with what they're recommending in the study. And so that's what you see there in, in fiscal year '26, is what we would expect, because this study should be completed within this year. So we'll, we'll know what they, what they recommend to us.
So Mr. Neal, this, this $3 million is just for the study alone?
No, the study's already taken place. That's already been budgeted for, that's been accounted for. This would be the improvements recommended by the study.
Gotcha.
And I'll follow up here when, when, I've got two other items, and I'll get to the next one and kind of address that as well a little bit more, if you'll give me a second.
Thank you.
Um, and the next thing on the list you see, and this is the one that's new, is the Hamburg driving range net. When you drive through Tarrell Park, obviously, you get to the golf course, you see it on the right, see it on the left, you get past the clubhouse, and you see our driving range. That driving range is not a gigantic driving range. Most driving ranges, um, in order to keep, you know, Mayor West in line, you probably need 300 yards. Um, in order to keep most people, you probably only need about 200. But our range goes up to about 225, 250. If you want to hit drivers on our driving range, you're pretty much blasting them across the street. And when there's no net that runs adjacent to that range, some people are blasting them at cars. Um, I, I think it's a safety issue, but also aesthetically, the idea that when you drive through this, this, this park, and you see golf, golf balls scattered all across the road and, uh, over into the other side of the, of the hole nine, and then where the disc golf course is in the, sort of in the triangle, I think this would really save us a lot of money on range balls. It's, it's, uh, but it's something that we need. It's something that's been needed for years, and if we can make this happen, I think, um, people will see that we're really putting some effort and some, some time into our golf course. I think that would be a great addition if we can do so. And lastly, you'll.
This net will be along Bates Harris?
Yes, sir. Just, just along the left side, left side of the range. Um, I, I don't remember the length of it, 525 feet long. It's a pretty good-sized net. Um, it, maybe we could make it as high as they do when you're driving through I-10 and you see, uh, 500, and you see their net, and you go, what the heck is that? Well, I don't think we need it that high, um, but I think it'd be, it, it just, it's a welcome addition if we can get it.
Is it any, um, plans to get one of, uh, I guess it's a tractor or whatever, to pick the balls up, other than a guy riding around on the court, picking them up with the little deal?
I mean, we've got the, the golf court that has the, the ball grabber, I'll just use that really scientific term, um, on the front of it. It's just a lot of times, it's not really as necessary. We don't, we don't have as much range usage. We do have that, yes, sir. And the last thing, as I mentioned to you a minute ago, Councilman Turner, you look over in future considerations, um, we don't put a date on that, one, because it's a scary number, um, and two, because it's, it's something that's really what we would consider, you know, pie in the sky, kind of a pipe dream type of deal, but, um, we've got a, we've got a good golf course, we really do, and we can make it a whole lot better. And in order to do so, it would take some legitimate investment. And the, the $11 million number is, is a number that, um, I didn't just make up, I'm not a golf course architect by any means, um, but in meeting with Baxter Span, who is head of the group that's doing our drainage study, who is a golf course architect and who redesigned Beaumont Country Club, um, that's a number that he kind of threw out that said, hey, if we want to really make real changes and make this a, not a, not a resort golf course, but a destination type of golf course, then this is the type of money that you would need to spend. He has, uh, provided me some renderings of just an initial idea of what he has to redo the course. It's, it's incredible. It, it really would be. It's probably not something that we would be able to do, um, but I think if it's, if, if we were, and, and I think council really in the last couple of years has shown their willingness to support some of the things that we're doing. I think, I don't, I don't, I don't imagine that, that you sitting up here would go, no, we don't want that. But it's going to take some real cooperation and teamwork, just to show that we're willing to even enter into this thought process of upgrading this golf course. It would, it would give us the opportunity to not charge $31 for a round of golf and legitimately charge 50 bucks, which people go, whoa, that's a lot of money. It's not really for, to go play golf, it's not. And if you look at what Eagle Point's doing, Eagle Point has probably done a $25 million investment on, in their golf course, and what they're doing is just unbelievable. And we lose a lot of people here that are willing to drive 40 miles up the road to go play there. We all know what the golf courses are like in Lake Charles, they've got beautiful golf courses. We can do the same thing here. But one thing that we can look into doing is working with some other entities. I know, I met with the guys in Houston a couple of weeks ago, and the H G A, Houston Golf Association, got together with the city, and I think they put, they raised over $10 million to redo one of their municipal golf courses called Gus, Gus Wertham Golf Course. I played it a few weeks back with the designer and got to see what they did, and it's, it's phenomenal. If we could maybe create a Beaumont Golf Association. There's a lot of people in Beaumont that love the game of golf. There's a lot of people in Beaumont that would love to see Henry Hamburg Golf Course upgraded. And, and I think that if we get the, sort of the buy-in from council to show that you guys are willing to enter into this potential, then we can start working on our end. What we don't want to do is start chasing down these people and say, hey, let's get together and form a group, and let's try to raise money, and then find out that council's not really on board. So I think that's kind of what you see that future consideration. Um, it, it could be really special i- if we had that opportunity. So thank you guys for humoring me on that, I appreciate it.
And one thing I would like, and, and this is not just for you, Mr. Neal, it's for, uh, council. I, I've talked to some businesses, uh, more than one now, about the potential of identifying projects within our parks that, uh, which gets with Kenneth, and in terms of how much it would cost to fund things, it might be further down the road that private business would fund to be able to put their name on it, and identify four to six across the city so that when they say, hey, we would love to do something, whether it's 50,000 or 500,000, have a variety of projects to be able to put before them, and then they might end up saying, it gives them also the ability to realize, okay, there is this option. Now, I may not want to, this is the type of thing I'm talking about, but I want it in this part of town. We don't have to, you know, but identifying five or six projects that we could put together brochures and also put online for businesses that say, hey, I would like to invest in the community, or we're coming to the community, or we're here and we want to raise our profile and let the community know that we want to invest back, uh, assuming, uh, that we can find a way to identify those projects and let them have some flexibility at the end of the day where they may, uh, want to be investing.
I know that there was discussion, and, and this, this may not be the place for it, but at our last advisory committee meeting, one of our committee members mentioned, and, and Mr. Boone has spoken about it as well, a possible Friends of the Parks type of organization that we can start kind of utilizing. Obviously, that's not something we've really ever done in the city of Beaumont. And in order to start doing these types of things and start getting some of these amenities that we want, these additions that we want, these upgrades, we may need to start looking at that. And, um, it's great that you bring that up. It's, I think we're to the point now, and this is again, is where the master plan is going to come and really help us with that, is we hate to, Ken, Ken Regent and I sit up here and talk to you about what we've got on paper, but we also know that this master plan is going to maybe usurp some of this stuff that we have, and maybe give us some different ideas and come up with some other opportunities that maybe we haven't already thought about, because they've done this in other cities. And so we're, we're, we've agreed to do this, we've got them contracted, so we're waiting for them to provide that for us, and I think it's going to be, uh, again, a great opportunity for us.
I agree, and, but I, the next step further is actually being able to have something tangible to be able to give to these, uh, inquiring businesses in terms of this would be something that would be a possibility in terms of cost, how much, what bang for the buck they would get, and, you know, pretty much wherever they ended up deciding to put such a, you know, park facility across the city.
It, it's something that, that's pretty common, 3P projects, public-private partnerships. And so, you know, we can just identify some things that we're interested in doing, or they could be interested in investing in, and so it, it's, it's commonplace with local governments and cities and, and the pub-private sector.
And, and the two conversations I've had recently, they weren't looking at necessarily envisioning it from their end, they just wanted to know, hey, what can the city present to us that we might be able to do in these price points? And I told them that I would be visiting, uh, about that. So that's, that's why I bring it up.
Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Neal. I think it's important, you know, the council, you, you, you have got that support with Parks and Recs over the years, because we showed you with the actions. Uh, and I'm excited that we are looking at these magnitude of projects, because we have talked about potential bonds and things of that magnitude in the future. And one thing I learned from studying Mr. Williams' success is with bonds, it's all about the projects that the community are, is actually interested in. And I know Austin and other guys have literally harassed me about this tennis, I mean, not this tennis, but this golf course since I've been on the council. But one of the things I'm very concerned about from a recreational standpoint is programming. Uh, I just wanted to know, do you currently have a programming budget?
I mean, yes, we, we've got an operating budget. You know, our department's always had a budget. We, we can't, we can't function without it.
Understood, I'm just asking. So with the programming, uh, how much of it did we use with youth initiatives, like with programming, like youth, youth initiatives programming?
I don't have, I don't have those numbers in front of me, Councilman. I mean, I've got the C I P stuff, I didn't bring anything else with me.
Okay. And just from a recreational standpoint, with our crime rate and amount of youth committing crime throughout the city of Beaumont, do you think it would be beneficial to have more of a focus of recreational program for our youth, specifically that 18, that 13 to 18 range, uh?
Do I think that solves anything? I mean, I, I don't know that my opinion on that really matters, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm asking you, the recreational director, that's why I'm asking.
I mean, we, we offer programming, we offered basketball league this year, we've, we've got a flag football league that we're putting out. From what I've seen and from meeting with B I S D, the, the information I receive is that programs are offered, programs are out there. Do we want to do more? Sure we do. Um, and that's something that you guys have pushed, that you guys want us to do, and so we're taking that and taking that opportunity to try and grow these things, but, you know, we, we can't force people to play. You know, we, we can't make them play, we can't make them participate. All we can do is offer it, and if they sign up and participate, then, then we put it on, and if they don't, you know, there's only so much we can do with it.
Yeah, Mr. Williams, I'd like to see just as, I want to see like a report or something we can get with council as far as programming, the direction we're going with programming, you know, what's been successful, what hasn't, and why not? So I kind of like an update on programming, specifically with our youth, because one thing, when I polled the community, one of the main things, and it's not targeted towards Mr. Neal, is programming with our youth. Right now, we really have a huge lack of youth programming, and this is something new that we've been pushing on, so I like to see what direction we're going in, and because when I'm out at neighborhood associations and things of that magnitude, and I'm questioning about this, I like to be able to speak to the direction that the city is going in. I think we've all said as a council, we want more youth initiatives and programming taking place.
Councilman Getz.
Gus McTurner, I totally understand what you're saying. However, when you are at these neighborhood association meetings and you're hearing these types of concerns voiced from the citizens, those are the citizens that aren't having problems with their kids because they are involved. Getting back to what Mr. Neal is saying is, you can't make kids come play. And so much of that is because of breakdown in the family unit and in the homes. We can offer all the recreational programs in the world, but we cannot make parents do their jobs. That's, that's a big part of the problem that I see in Beaumont, that we have a lack of family units, a lack of parents doing the jobs. So I, I don't know, that's, that's a much deeper discussion than what we can do today as we talk about our community investment plan. But I do think that that's going to have to involve churches, uh, social organizations, a much more comprehensive thing than what is currently out there. Recreational programs by itself, I don't think it's going to get us where we need.
And, and Councilman, I agree 100%, but I also do know we had a situation with programming where we said we couldn't get it done. We made some adjustments and it got done, so I don't think that's a fair statement to make. But I do think as a council, we really need to be way more serious about our youth initiatives and the programming, because right now, you can look at the status that I asked the citizens about things that they would like to see or we would like to discuss in the budget process, and I wouldn't be honest if I didn't say this was the number one thing on my status currently on social media that the citizens of Beaumont have requested and asked for. And I wouldn't be bringing it up if the constituents didn't ask for it. So that's the reason I'm bringing it up right now.
And, and I think having a workshop just on, uh, youth activities and how we can have public-private partnerships would be worthwhile. I also would like to see if, for future consideration, for this coming, uh, calendar year, budget year, about expanding the hours at Sterling Pruitt on the weekends and into the evening times, so that when kids are out of school, they have more time, and I realize that that's going to involve more staff and costs, but we just have that one indoor facility in the city, and having it available into later in the evening so that, uh, youth would have somewhere else to go. Also, finding ways for programming, but also on Sundays since it's not open. So that would be something that I'm hoping that we will be able to incorporate in this coming budget year.
And Mayor, I assume that we track this, and so it would be easy to give us this data, but this report that you're bringing to this, uh, city manager, we could, we could count the number of kids that are actually going through our programs. That would be interesting to know, how many students are going through these programs, and that would give us a better feel for how successful we really are.
And I, I just want to add one other thing, uh, Councilman Turner, you put on Facebook, uh, a request for constituents to get involved in letting them know that we're going to be here today. And I think that was excellent, because I read some of their comments, and several bemoaned the fact that we no longer have Y M C As here, and suggested that, you know, the city needs to do something. Well, of course, it's not a, the Y M C A is separate from the city, but I took note of the fact that there's a desire, uh, to have the Y M C As.
They've got the most likes and.
Yeah, now, I, I did note, note that, and of course, we used to have multiple Y M C As in Beaumont, and, uh, I don't know if there exists the opportunity for the city to try to collaborate with Y M C A National. I know Port Arthur has a Y M C A, but, um, maybe we could at least have a conversation to see what we could do to get the Y M C A to look at coming back into Beaumont. It is sort of an embarrassment that a city the size of Beaumont no longer has a program like the Y M C A, which, you know, legions of children went through the Y M C A, both at the West End Y and the, um, the Y that's, uh, was over on Sarah Street. Uh, so, uh, yeah, we, maybe we could have a conversation there, Mr. Williams, with somebody from the Y M C A.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, while Jim is coming forward, at the bottom of the sheet, that's on the screen, there's a color coded list of items. And this identifies how these projects would be possibly funded. So be sure when you look at the color of the, it identifies right now how it's to be funded, whether it's students, students are dead, or out of the operating fund, or grants, et cetera, whatever. Just, just a note.
Thank you.
Good morning. Item number one is the Lake District restroom facility for the 2026-27 year for 763,650. To construct a new men's and women's restroom facility on the north side of the Centennial Playground located in the Lake District area. The proposed project consists of a single-use men's and women's restroom, concrete sidewalks, new sewer manholes, fence modifications, plumbing and electrical. Facility will be designed to fit within the current design criteria of the Event Center and the Lakeside Center. Questions? Sir?
What, what happens right now with the restrooms that we have, the outside restrooms that are in the Event Center? Do they stay unlocked? Or are they locked? Or are they becoming a problem for homeless going in there? What? I'm seeing, yeah, okay, so.
So they are locked at certain times.
Good morning. The restrooms are open roughly eight to five, eight to six. During the summer, we keep them open later. So I have staff dedicated to cleaning the park area outside on a golf cart. And they monitor the restrooms, unlock them and lock them. We lock them at night. But really, we try to keep a consistent schedule of eight to five, eight to seven in the summer. There are many times when someone gets in the restroom and locks the doors, and they stay in there for several hours. So my staff will knock on the doors and try to get people to come out. We have had some issues, though, where that's not really a safe situation. But those restrooms do not get used for the correct purposes a lot of the time. And it's, they're very nice, and they're air conditioned. And we've taken the, we've closed off all the electrical outlets. But they have running water, and they're air conditioned. And they lock.
And for those that are listening, you've turned off the outlet, so people aren't going in there and locking the door and charging devices because they don't have.
Right. So how do we, I hate to bring this up, but we're spending potentially, you know, three quarters of a million dollars on new restroom facilities. Why will that situation be different? Will these not be air conditioned? Will these be, I mean, how do we know that we won't have the same issues if we build these new restrooms?
So these would be more like the park restrooms at Rogers Park, similar type of situation, as opposed to, I think, the initial plan for the restrooms, and I wasn't here at the time, but when the Event Center was built, I think that the, the thought was that they were going to be used more for Event Center events. So people that are using the patio, and there's no way that their intention would have been for 24/7 use, having locked doors, electrical outlets, and air conditioning. I mean, I'd move in. They're nice. So I, I don't think that that's what they were meant for. But I think that Rogers, the Rogers Park restrooms is more in line with what, and isn't this similar also to the park, the, the restrooms that were talked about at the golf course? I mean, they're, they're indoor, outdoor restrooms.
And Councilman Getz, and Emily, please correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things that I believe is happening, if, if a parent has multiple children in the park playing, and they have to take one to the bathroom, it's a walk from there to the backside of the Event Center, and they have to take all of their children, because they can't leave them there unattended. Is that correct?
Hold on, Randy. I think I can speak for that, and I got an example. That's a long run. I have three little ones. That's a long run from the playground to make it without using it on yourself, all the way. Oh, yeah, both in the key. So I'm saying, I literally have picked up one and drug the other one trying to make it in time. So it is a nice, nice run, yeah.
And I will say also that out of respect for people who are hosting events at the Event Center, we do our best to try to close off that patio, so that people aren't picnicking while you're having your wedding inside. So, you know, you do have to create quite a long path to get all the way around the lake to the restroom. So I think obviously, this is about proximity as much as it is about the other things that we discussed.
Okay, thank you.
You have other questions for me?
Okay, item number two, City Hall courtyard and plaza renovation for the 2627 year, 1,190,000. Installation of new paving, lighting, site amenities, and water fountain in the courtyard area between City Hall and the Civic Center. Including the front and south side of the Civic Center, this project would include the removal of a portion of the Civic Center wall canopy. The project will include the adjustment of grade elevation to new landscaping in front of City Hall to replace the trees that are currently causing pavement damage. The project will enhance the area surrounding City Hall and provide a more user-friendly and inviting space.
I'm sorry, I may have, maybe I, I got distracted. You said remove the trees.
Yes, sir.
Are you talking about those, those live oaks?
It's in the plan. It puts landscaping down in that area.
Two live oaks right there, like those, those live oaks right there?
Maybe not that one, but these ones in the front that are, that are, that are pushing the pavers up and creating tripping hazards.
I, I would approach that with great caution. If, that's, to, to remove a live oak is going to be, that's going to be a problem with the citizens, I'm sure.
There's a couple of options that we could do with the trees out there. Right now, as you know, that they're tearing up the sidewalk. So you'd actually have to make somewhat of a dig-down planter, is what it's called, in order to stop the roots at a two to three foot level, so they don't pop up where they are. Of course, we talk about, you know, we don't like to remove trees, but sometimes we have to. And this may be a case we really need to, because that would be, it'll probably cost you $2,000 to $3,000 or more, maybe closer to five, in order to do that submerged pot, per se, for the tree. Most of the trees out there have some type of issues. They're not the healthiest trees. I know when I first got hired on here, I had mentioned to the previous city manager, and Keith Folsom, when he was here, that anytime we have a landscape that goes in, a lot of times, a landscaper purchases a thousand trees, and he'll just fill them up wherever he needs to put them. It's not always the right tree for the right location. You should never plant live oaks in front of your building. You shouldn't even have them down calder. You know, everyone thinks and loves those avenues, avenues in Louisiana and Alabama and everywhere, everywhere with the live oak trees. But you're looking at something 100 years ago, where you didn't even have those streets and sidewalks. You know, it was dirt roads, so they planted those trees there just to line your road. So there's trees that are specifically made for sidewalk areas, which won't tear up your sidewalk. But if we don't do something with those oak trees, it'll just be continuous. You'd only buy time by putting in that underground pot with them.
Hey, Kennedy, fair question. Not only that, so does it cost, it costs just as much to replace this sidewalk paving, right? I know concreting things are expensive. I'm not advocating to remove the tree, but I just know there's way more expenses involved in just the $5,000 kind of barricaded, right?
Lot of expense, a lot of time. Buying time.
So, you know, one of the reasons we put pavers down was, it was easier to replace and repair pavers than, you know, just a concrete sidewalk. My bigger concern, Councilman Felsch, I, I love live oak trees, too. Do they threaten the integrity of our building? Because we all know what can happen with live oaks in front of your house, and how they can strata affect the foundation. Has anybody looked to see if that is a concern from the roots of the live oak trees in front of the Civic Center, encroaching and approaching the foundation of the Civic Center?
I don't think anyone has looked into it. When you start thinking about, you know, large construction buildings like this, it's not all the time a tree really, really will affect, the root system will affect the slab of that building. So I don't think it's really an issue. The biggest issue is just your sidewalks. And even though we put in the, I wasn't here at the time, the pavers along calder, the trees that you have there are basically planted in a pot, which is not a good thing either. That's why so many of them have died off, because the whole water, moisture, and everything else. So again, you have to have the right tree, the right location.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Item three will be a nested tea hanger for the 2728 year. Make sure you, 2,851,000. Construct one 10 unit nested tea hanger to accommodate the storage of 10 small private aircraft. The proposed improvements would include a pre-engineered metal building, bi-fold hanger doors, concrete foundation, fire detection, electrical, concrete taxi lanes, including a firewall, and landscaping. This new hanger will be constructed on the north side of the airport property. Item four, new animal, new animal care service and adoption center for the 2627 year, 6,614,200. The new animal care and adoption service facility would be located to a site that would allow for more ground space and visibility. The proposed project would consist of 18,000 square foot of building space, site parking, and including a fenced dog run area adjacent to the facility. Item five, large aircraft clear span hanger for the, sorry, 2728 year, 2,401,152. Construct one 11,000, 11,995 square foot, square foot clear span, pre-engineered large box hanger to accommodate private aircraft. The proposed improvements would include the metal, metal building, large hanger door, concrete foundation, concrete access apron, electrical fire detection, minimal landscape and engineering.
Question?
Sir?
Okay, so you've now read two pretty major projects for the municipal airport, which right now is just for private facility, private aircraft. There was conversation at one point in time about trying to pursue some commercial aspects to the airport. Has that just gone away? Or is that still something that?
I haven't heard anything on that one.
Chris Mo is still trying to pursue, you know, opportunities, but nothing's materialized at this point. A couple of private hangars have, have been built recently. But I think, I'm assuming Councilman Getz was talking more bringing a restaurant, or.
No, I'm talking, flight. I'm talking about airlines, like boutique airlines that would have directed service from Beaumont to, like Dallas or other.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of any plans for commercial airlines in this, as opposed to Jefferson County's, you know, Mid-County Airport, but more just promoting private air service in more and more. But right now, we really make our money off the fuel, fuel sales. So the more traffic we get in and out, the more fuel is purchased. And that's, that's been our profit-making enterprise out there.
Can, can we check with Mr. Mo and see if those conversations are still ongoing, or if that is a possibility? Because I think there would be a market, you know, for the airlines that would have, you know, direct service to Dallas or Austin, and things like, New Orleans, and things like that.
Okay.
And I, I had a question as well. Honestly, Taylor, you might be able to answer this more than anybody. With the nested tier hangers, tea hangers, are those leased out? Or do we, like, how does that work? Wow, yeah.
The answer for.
It's leased?
Yes, sir.
And so it, the ones that we already have occupied, do we get a pretty good return?
Well, they're full, and there's a waiting list. But that's probably something we need to consider moving forward is, is the rates.
Okay.
We really make our money off the fuel.
So, so the racer?
Yeah.
Yeah, they got the money, they got the plane. So, yeah, he never want to raise rates. We're going to build the hangars and.
We had discussed it in the past, and I think council chose not to raise the rates.
You had to discuss it again.
Yeah, we might have to discuss it again. We're talking 5,252,000.
What, what is the normal rate for renting a spot in the hanger?
I don't know it off the top of my head. I can provide it to you.
No.
The goal is to get the planes there at the airport, because they got to buy fuel once they get there. And that's the return on the investment of how much fuel they're going to buy. And I don't know the numbers, but there's a pretty good profit margin on fuel sales.
And that's why he's trying to develop and get more jet aircraft in, because we make more money off jet fuel than turboprops.
We had approved a flight simulator sometime back. Is that getting a lot of use?
I can't answer that question.
My understanding is it is, yes, sir.
Yeah. I, I just, you know, Chris Mo's doing a great job out there. Just, you know, when we invest in the money, I'm just interested to know some of that return. I get the fuel, but I also would like to look at the numbers on the leases as well.
Okay.
And as a reminder, about $58 million of this that we're looking at is general obligation bonds, which would be voted on by the, by the residents that we're talking about on these projects. Am I correct on that?
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
Item six, restroom facilities at the athletic complex number three. Build construct, I'm sorry, for the 28 year, is that right? Yep, 2829 year, 436,680. Construct a new men's and women's restroom facility at the athletic complex number three. Field, the proposed project will consist of a multi-use men's and women's restroom, concrete sidewalks, fence modifications, plumbing, electric, electrical, and demolition of the existing restrooms. The design of the new facility will be like the existing restroom facility near complex two, but on a smaller scale. Sir?
What's wrong with the existing restrooms?
Anything you want to speak on, Jimmy? It's, they're, they're rundown. At the, at complex two.
Okay. I mean, they're rundown. Can they be rehabbed? Or do they need to be demolished? What, what are we talking about?
This is complex three?
The three.
Is that right?
Yes.
So if, if you recall, after, I believe it was Ike, we built the restroom facility in, in the middle of, between complexes one and two, that's kind of in that parking lot. So it's designed to utilize both, for people to utilize it from both complexes. We still have the old building at complex two, that has restrooms, and then a press box and a little storage area. That same building exists over at complex three as well. It is, it is not in great shape. It's old. The building itself, it, it, it's, it's not going to fall down. We can't say that. But it's, it's in pretty bad shape. The restrooms are old. We, we really needed this. What, what they're going to do there is, is similar to what we built over at, between complexes one and two. Not the same size, because we don't have as many people. But it's something that's a little more modern. And that old building has probably been there over 40 years. It looks a lot like, you remember the old tennis building? It's, it's the same type of structure, older, kind of falling apart. It's been through, been through a few storms. So it'll give us an, an opportunity to really upgrade it and spruce up the complex. It's much needed.
That old tennis building is still a pretty nice facility, and it's.
It's still there.
It's, it's not being utilized for, what is it being utilized for?
Well, you've got outdoor restrooms, so it's used for that. And then we've got storage capability inside.
So are the restrooms at the softball complex like the restrooms at the tennis facility building?
They're in worse shape. The ones at the, at the tennis facility have been maintained a little bit better. They've had some more work done to them to upgrade them through the years, because it was the only opportunity, the only option you had out there. At the comp, at the softball complex, you could always go over to complex one and two. So we haven't upgraded those restrooms like they did at the tennis building. So we haven't upgraded those restrooms like they did at the tennis building.
And, forgive me, but those restrooms at the old tennis pro shop, they're not bad. Could, could they be upgraded to, at the softball field, to, to that level?
I don't know, I can't really answer that, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, it's, it's just like a wood frame, uh, what do you call it, like a concession stand type?
Yeah, that's, that's a good way to put it. When, when those were built, councilman, that was back in the day when we ran concessions out of there. So the front side of the building that faces the center, you've got three fields. So the center field, um, it's got doors that can open up and be used for concessions. We stopped doing that probably thirty years ago. There were some vending machines that were placed in their spot sometime around then, then those were pulled out about twenty years ago. So the building itself is not utilized, um, it's not used for scorekeeping upstairs. Um, the, the stairs, the upstairs structure is not in great shape. Um, the one in complex two is very similar and it's not ideal either.
I just need to come look at it, so.
Okay.
Item seven, new fire station four, twenty-eight, twenty-nine year, five million, two hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Construct a new fire station four facility near the site of the existing fire station. The proposed project will feature pull-through stalls, separated dorm rooms, workout room, ample parking space and security fencing. Facility will be designed to meet the needs of a modern fire department with all the service and living space at ground level.
That's for location, can you just tell us the location?
Lucas and. Gladys and Lucas? Gladys, yes. Is that where, is that where the new one will be built? Yes, sir. Would be able to put it on that? It, it's, speaking with Chief White, yes, sir, that's where they need to go.
Is it enough room for all that, that spot, it's a kind of tight squeeze it seems like, yeah.
Looking at the building that's there now, this is small space.
Just don't look too spacious over there.
It's, it's, it's tight, but chief said it might have to go up and, and do it and possibly could do it. You know, you're gonna, gotta get an engineer to get a total answer, but they think if they did something and went up instead of out, uh, you could put something on that. You hear me, he's talking, Taylor.
I mean. That's where it needs to be, but that's, it just needs to be in that area, it doesn't have to be on that particular spot, right?
It's true.
Chief Sandler?
Thank you.
Yes.
Item eight, new recreation center for the twenty-eight, twenty-nine year, ten million, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred forty dollars. Uh, construct a new recreation activity center to the location to be termed within the city. The proposed project consists of an indoor basketball court, indoor racquetball court, weight room, activity room, restroom and locker rooms, administration area and site parking. The facility would, would be focused on physical activities, summer programs, fitness programs and interactive learning activities.
Yeah, one thing, Taylor, don't say nothing, all right? But one thing about this, I think we did discuss, like, the only thing that was also missing at this sports complex is maybe some of those fields that kind of can connect to the weight room that you see at some of these more modern, uh, athletic complexes. I know we kind of talked about that, I just heard the brief description and I didn't hear it, so that's why I was asking, is, is that something still in consideration or is that something we're not looking into no more, yeah?
Anybody can comment.
Does this price include the equipment?
Do that question for you a little bit better, AJ, a lot of that kind of stuff doesn't really, you, you don't get that level of detail until you start the programming of the design.
Yeah, understood, I just wanted to make sure, you know, that was a part of what we initially talked about, I just wanted to make sure it still wasn't left off or not. You know, I understand, but I just wanted to make sure.
What, what I'm more interested on, Mr. Williams, not necessarily the project itself, but what is the operating cost of a facility like this moving forward?
We'd have, we'd, we could have those numbers because we couldn't do a project like that without having those numbers. Because, you know, you're talking about a substantial project, so we would have those numbers for you, you were able to, uh, even considered to make a decision.
I want to interject here. We're talking about recreational facilities. You know, the reason why we did not have historically recreational facilities in the west end and in the south end was getting back to something I alluded to earlier, we had YMCA's there. They formed the function of recreational facilities in the west end and in the south end. Getting back to my previous comment, maybe it's time to get back to trying to talk to the Y and collaborate with them in a public, private partnership manner. Because it's been explained to me that, yeah, we can build it, we can build a facility, but the ongoing expense of running it, what you just talked about, Councilmember Neil, that's something that the city has to look at carefully because you're, you're talking about, I think, at least a million dollars a year right now to run the Sterling Pruitt. It was explained to me in the past that that was the reason why the city had always shied away from recreational, uh, building any further recreational centers. We had the opportunity to acquire, uh, both the YMCA in the south end and the one that they started to build out in the west end and the previous city manager said no, uh, because he didn't want to incur the ongoing expense of operating those two facilities. So if that's in any way part of the current thinking, maybe invite the Y back and let them run it and maybe we can partner with them in helping construct something, I, I, it's just a thought, but maybe that needs to be explored.
Question, man.
Yes, sir.
And if we're gonna look into that, I also like to look into the amount of money it costs us to construct the tennis facility. And I would like to know the profit margin and how much it's costing us to run that facility as well. Because I think those are all things we need to talk about when we're considering doing one thing, but not doing the other. I'm not opposed to the YMCA, but one thing I'm not gonna do is, I know a lot of these facilities don't generate revenue as a profit, what they're intended for to do is to be something in reference to, what is that terminology I'm looking for, you said all the time, quality of life. So I, I do want to be very transparent in that because some of these investments we already made. So one thing I don't want to do is cut back when it comes to that. And even if you look at our community to make up, uh, the majority of what's done. Right now, I say this all the time, you have youth practicing, youth football literally in front of Westbrook, not on the field, you have them practicing all over the community with no fields. Right now, we clearly been discussing gyms with BISD forever, it hasn't happened. So at some point, the talk gotta quit and we gotta move forward to something. This right here is a general obligation bond in the community, we need to vote yes or no. To my understanding, Mr. Manager, is that correct? It's not coming from the general fund?
Correct.
So I think I'm totally okay with letting the community decide that because I know, was the tennis, was the tennis facility a general obligation bond or where did that funding come from?
I'm not sure how it was funded.
And, and how much was it, I like to know that as well. And again, what is it generating as far as revenue or return?
Thank you, Councilman Turner.
Yeah, I just want to go historically back because it, it follows in suit. Back in the day, and I'm talking about a day pretty long ago, our municipal tennis facility had eight courts in that wooden frame pro shop. It was not the palace that it is now. But the reason that the city never really did anything more than just have an eight-court tennis facility is because you had the west end Y with about twenty courts. And that's where the bulk of the tennis was played in the Beaumont back in the day. Um, and they, you also had the Beaumont Country Club and you had the BPM Club, you had a lot more tennis facilities. Uh, when those all went away, the need to have tennis facilities, you know, became apparent. That's how we got what we have now. But, uh, again, the YMCA was not just tennis, it was soccer, daycare.
Aerobics.
Aerobics, all, all of that, so it's just worth the conversation, I think.
Yeah, Ca, Councilman Neil?
So, Councilman Turner, like I said, I, first of all, I'm not against the projects, I just want to look at the cost of the operating on it. But one of the other options that we could possibly look into, instead of building a completely new facility, doing a major upgrade over to the Sterling Pruitt where you already would have some synergies with, with people managing the facility.
I think, I think one of the biggest problems, and I think that's a good idea, T, but I think one of the biggest problems is when you look at the makeup of our community, and again, similar to what Mike is saying, the Y's and things of that magnitude, the one thing I consistently hear in the most meetings and almost everywhere I go is we really have lack of youth engagement and activity. And even our crime rate is, is very high with our young people. And again, we say it's a parenting problem, but this is a problem that's been existing in Beaumont and we can only say it's a parenting problem for so long, it's not gonna go away, I, I don't think it's gonna change. So at some point, we gotta figure out a way as a city, we can't have the mentality that, you know, it's not our kids because every kid in the city of Beaumont, I look at it as our kids. And if we don't start putting more of a focus on addressing some of the situations they just don't have, we, we will keep continuing down the route with this crime problem.
Yes, Councilman Samuel?
Okay, I've been kind of quiet, but as we, as we're talking about, uh, recreation, we talked, we talked about complexes and what we're going to do, uh, in moving forward. Uh, we've talked about programming, the lack of programming. Um, we have to look at this from, uh, a number of different facets. One, uh, one of the biggest problems we're having to deal with is mental health. Okay, so we have opportunities to bring the health department in. We have opportunities to have a facility that could facilitate, uh, health, uh, care for the community. It can involve recreation in the community and provide some services to help with mental health issues. Now, if we're talking about doing something like that, I think that's integral, uh, integral part of having a healthy community. We've seen disappearances of, of, of grocery stores in our area. Uh, but yet and still, we still have individuals that need exercise and not only physical exercise, but there's a need for mental health conditioning. So all of these things, so we have to look at what other cities are doing as far as bringing all of these components in to provide for a healthy community. So as we do this, I like the fact that we're looking at a center, okay? Possibly it could be Sterling Pruitt on that property. That could, there's a lot of park area there. It's not actually utilized as it once have been used as a community park. But if we provide more services, it could create and enhance the use of the park itself. So I'd like to look at something like that because we can talk about exercise, physical exercise, ball fields, par, uh, gyms, we can talk about all this. But until we deal with mental health and deal with some of the trauma in our neighborhoods, we, we're just spinning our wheels. So I'd like to bring that component into this, uh, whole consideration and conversation.
Mayor. Thank you. Yes, Councilman Duryo?
So as far as Sterling Pruitt goes, that's, it's a great facility. But some other people in our community can't get there, it's way on the other side of town. So we would need, uh, this recreation activity center, it needs to be on another side of town, on another park. Where, where, that way we can reach more kids or more folks that need something like this. So I, I would think we would, instead of going and building that at Magnolia Park, whenever we get to it, we need to find, uh, another location, possibly in South Beaumont, so, that's what I want to say.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be one of the issues, Ken, that I can foresee coming with the future council. We know it's a need and everybody has opinions, but location, I think, can become an issue in the future because I know, you know, me being that large, I'm more than confident what war members would be pushing for, for a location.
And, and those are some questions too that will be addressed and talked about and maybe even answered in this parks comp, comprehensive plan. You know, a lot of the things we're discussing now, it's great to know these priorities that you want in a parks comprehensive plan. So, uh, we, we hear you and a lot of it, but just know it's gonna be addressed and that, it'll talk about that and it'll talk about locations, uh, or whatever, so. It's great getting the priorities today and you're gonna get even a chance, opportunity at, at the next agenda item and talk more about your priorities. But just know all these parks things are gonna be addressed and talked about over the next, hopefully less than the next year as far as priorities for the parks recreation system.
Yes.
Well, I will add with this. Uh, we have not seen in recent years too much of this war fighting. Uh, and that's not a place that's healthy for the entire community. Uh, we have to bring about a parity so that all areas of our city would have, I'm not gonna say equal, but there should be some parity in all facilities we have in our city. They, it, uh, north end should not be, uh, any different from the west end or the south end. So we have to be careful about, uh, looking at facilities themselves. It's not the facility, it's the service of the facility that's important. And if we have one building that's, uh, a lot newer than a, a old building in another area, it doesn't mean it has to be destroyed, it means we can do something to bring about a parity in the two facilities. Uh, so I don't want to get into this war with, uh, war politics. Uh, we're looking at what's gonna be good for the entire city of Beaumont.
And on point, economic development, we're gonna be continuing talking about that to generate more revenue for the city because obviously when it comes to these quality of life issues and, uh, facilities, there may not generate a lot of revenue, but it does generate people coming to our city and perhaps moving here. And, uh, because that's really where our biggest challenge lies in the fact that we're not a growing community and it's not increasing our revenues.
I'm sorry, y'all got me started already, but, uh, Ken, are we doing anything to, uh, really address, uh, facilities, uh, or services in our public facilities? Uh, like working with the health department? Uh, I know most of, uh, the actions are over on, uh, a college at the main building and over on, uh, Washington Boulevard, uh, but, um, all areas of the city needs to be serviced with some of those things. Uh, have we looked at doing that, uh, Mr. Coleman or, Ken? I, I, I sincerely believe that, uh, part of the big problems with, that we're having with crime, there's a, an association with mental health or the lack of, uh, assistance in mental health care issues.
Well, uh, good morning, uh, so far as, uh, mental health services, now we do have in the city what we call federally qualified health clinics. You have, uh, UB Caritas that's on Holland, a lavaca right across from South Park. You have Triangle Area Network that's on Seventh. And you have, uh, Legacy Community Health that's on North Eleventh. And those services are provided for people based on, excuse me, based on income. So no income, you still get service, you still get to see a doctor, you still get primary care. And you also have the Jefferson County Public Health Department, which serves the indigent population of Jefferson County. So there are services available within this city to provide those services. But it's not to say that public health could do. But it's not to say that public health could do something or add to it. I'm just letting you know that these services are available.
Well, some, these services are available. But what I'm not sure of is, within our community, when we are seeing a rising number of young people in need of assistance when they're going through a crisis, I'm concerned with where these parents can go, whether, whether they know where they can get assistance. Because I'm seeing too many people going to the hospital and going directly from the hospital to the jail. So I'm not certain that this is our realm of responsibility, but we do have an obligation to do something to slow down this process of it's associated with crime, it's associated with healthcare. So we have to do something to address these type of issues.
Now, what we do at Public Health, we do hold health fairs at our facility on College. And what we do, we invite these services that we're talking about. We invite these services to the health fair, so people can come in, and they come to the health fair, the person can sign up for services that day. Also, BISD has a program within their district called the Wellness Program. And that program is to assist not only the students, but the parents who are dealing with mental health issues. So Miles has coordinated with BISD, so they have that program available as well. Now, I agree with you, that is a problem. But the services are available. Maybe we just need to do a better job as making parents aware of what's available. We do, so far as public health, these agencies do advertise, they, within the communities, again, it's just getting people to access, it's getting people to realize that they are in a crisis. It's getting people to realize that I do need some help, and that's the challenging part.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, and I thank you for bringing that up, because I want to say first, thank you, Miles. I've been in, for the past two days, I've been in this session with, dealing with mental health care. And your name has come up. I know that you're working with the city and the police department. They, they've been in meetings all day. So if the community is not aware, then that is somewhat of a lack of, lack of knowledge, it doesn't make the situation any better. So we have, maybe we have to do a little bit more to make sure people understand where they can get assistance. Because, well, enough said. Miles, did you want to add something to that?
No, I just echo what, you know, Mr. Coleman had said. You guys did put in a strategic plan, community mental health, so that's something that City Manager assigned me to kind of work on. So we are working on it. We take notes that, you know, if you want a more aggressive approach to it, or more awareness needs to be taken into the community. I mean, it's a huge issue. So you guys, just want to let you know, we are working on it. There are scheduled meetings with the manager and the mayor about the TBR framework, and that's, I think that's the meeting that you've been kind of part of. So there is a holistic approach to community mental health that has been taken, but it's such a big topic, and it includes so many community partners, and we've included all those community partners in our meetings. So we are doing it, and some of it is unseen, some of it you may see and hear about. But we are aggressively working on it, trying to pioneer something that hasn't been done before.
Miles, could you be a little more specific and talk about some of the activities and groups we're working with at mental health? As Miles said, this council identified mental health as one of your goals in the strategic plan and working with it. So we, we are, as an organization, being proactive and working with mental health operations. So Miles, talk about some of the more specific things that you've done and what we're doing.
Yeah, so what I did was I partnered with Christian Manuel Office, Dave Phelan Office, Baptist Hospital, Lamar University, Spindletop, Argenia Rogers, Kim Phelan, Mental Health America, and those are in Jefferson County, Jeff Brannick Office, Fred Jackson, I've worked with him. And so I met with everybody individually, identified what they were doing and where the gaps in services are. Then I brought everybody in a meeting, and we've worked on an ongoing process since, I think January is when we started meeting. So we have a monthly group that we work with. We collaborated on grants. We're trying to include more services. But a lot of this conversation, what we've identified is everybody's working in silos, and we're just trying to bring everybody together. So, you know, hopefully that was specific enough, but we are, we're working with most of all the community partners. I've went out to meetings with the counselors in this area on a Saturday morning, spoke to them and encouraging them to give us feedback. And so we were trying our best, if you identify partners that we haven't reached out to, please, you know, let the manager know so we can kind of include them.
Well, I didn't want to sidetrack us, but when I saw the facility and the talk about a mass facility to serve the community, that automatically brought me back to that type of service and that need that exists here. So, thank you.
As a quick reminder, we're on page 20 of about 135-page project that we were going to get through today, and just to be mindful.
Twenty-eight.
Oh, you're right. I don't have my readers on. It is 28. It looks like 20 when you don't have your readers on.
Fast forward to 75.
If some of the, the, all that goes quicker, there seems to be more discussion on some of the more quality of life issues. Someone that gets to more, some of the nuts and bolts of infrastructure goes a little faster. And Jim, if you do us a favor, just kind of mention the project, and if council has any questions, address them. We don't have, don't worry. Read the caption unless council wants it.
Item nine, Main Street Riverfront Extension for 26, 27-year. Nine million, four hundred thousand.
What do we, okay, what exactly are we doing there? What is that?
We don't.
I mean, that's a big number. Whoa.
Councilman Getz, that was originally the project that Mr. Keith Folsom put together originally for the 555 Main. There was a plaza. He created a schematic, and that was the cost that he projected that to be. So this is a placeholder. So we don't know what's going in that location yet, but we, we're using his only design for that corner and his cost estimate as a placeholder until the city council decides on what you would like to go at that location.
I'm just going to go on record as saying, I cannot support anywhere close to something like that when we have all these other needs. We're looking at recreational facilities, we're looking at so many other things that I just, that is an astonishing number to me. And it ties back into the overall vision that the previous city manager had with 555 Main Street. I remember so clearly, you know, he said, well, y'all can be, it can be whatever you want it to be. Well, I guess it can, but it comes with a price tag. And, you know, right now, we're looking at Opening Riverfront Park. We want to get that finished. I understand that that could possibly be the site of a hotel. We need to decide at some point what we want to do with that tract of land that is about to become, you know, just a dirt lot, and it costs a $4 million. So I just, I understand it's a placeholder, and I understand that nothing is being planned for 2025, but it does give me a heartburn to see a number like $9 million on something like that, when I just don't think that is something that we, we need to have down there.
And this is also contingent on the plan or proposed hotel. Once we determine where we're going to go with regard to that hotel, where it's going to actually sit, you know, this plays a part in, in that whole idea for that section.
Item 10.
Councilman Samuel? All right.
Item 10, property located at 555 Main Street, which is currently a project, $1,100,000. Item 11, Riverfront Park Restoration, which is happening now and going into '25.
Yes.
I am going to say something. These last three projects, I'm not sure why nothing was stated, why they were kind of gone by. But that could be, those three projects together could be the best thing or the biggest thing to happen in Beaumont, or could be the best thing for the future of Beaumont. For years, we've talked about declining population downtown, businesses going away downtown, nothing's happening downtown. But that river is the most important asset that the city of Beaumont has. Every city across this country that has a natural resource like that, it has been a beacon to bring the surrounding area to that heart of the city. If we don't do something to refocus and bring about an understanding how significant that is to our city, then we might as well turn off the lights and go home. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Getz?
I think we are doing something. We're rebuilding Riverfront Park. But once you get past the Riverfront Park area of downtown, it's going to be very, very difficult to do anything to redevelop downtown when you have blocks and blocks of dilapidated buildings sitting there. That's just the reality. I mean, there's, it's the elephant in the room. There's, there's no way of getting around it. And I understand that staff has tried to be more aggressive in forcing building owners to do something to fix their dilapidated buildings, but that's going to be a long process. It didn't happen overnight. It's not going to be fixed overnight. We can't make building owners do anything more than board up and secure their buildings. We can't make them secure tenants to make downtown thriving once again. All the wishful thinking of Riverwalk or anything else with downtown development is going to be impeded by the fact that you have blocks and blocks of large buildings that are vacant, that have become sources of vandalism, that have homeless people breaking into them, taking up residence there. That problem's got to be fixed before you can really even start thinking about redevelopment of downtown, in my opinion.
Councilman Turner?
And Mayor, that's why, something I think we haven't really done as much this year as a council. We kind of slowed down on it, but just us really staying on pace as far as our direction downtown. I think normally when we don't meet and discuss these things, similar to what happened the first time, you know, some interference came with the AT&amp;T building, but I think if we keep this kind of in our forefront and stay focused and stay at a timeline, a date, a deadline when we're going to knock this out, you wouldn't see, you know, some of the back and forth. We make a decision as a council, hit the timeline, and just keep moving. I think that's kind of one of the things that's been hurting us, my honest opinion.
Thank you.
Item 12, Proposed Water Park, 28, 29-year, $9,684,000. Item 13, Food Truck Park, 25, 26-year, $700,000. Item 14 would be Civic Center renovation for the 27, 28-year, $10,398,276. 15, item 15 would be Colliers Ferry Boat Ramp and Pier for the 25, 26-year, $440,000. Item 16, Municipal Transit Roof for the 26-year, $800,000. Item 17, be a new Police Department Headquarters, which would be future consideration, $99,343,000. The final one, item 18 would be a new City Hall complex, again, a future consideration for $86,371,640.
Thank you, sir.
Ken, I want to see more of the blues. Yeah, the grants, that's the blues.
We're working on that, Councilman.
I like the blues.
Yeah, I like the blues, too.
There's some blue.
There you go, boy.
You ask, we deliver. So a lot of these continue from previous years, but we'll, we'll roll through all of those. There's just a couple of new ones this year. The annual dead-end flushing, federal-state regulations require us to maintain chlorine residual, and we have to flush those dead ends. This project includes the purchase and installation of manual and automated flushing equipment for $155,000 in FY '25. The water line, annual, annual water production system repairs. We own and maintain, as y'all understand, a large water system. This item allows us to address capital items that aren't large projects but have come up. Example of that this year would be the rebuilding of the Lawson's Raw Water Pumps, which was done with this particular CIP item in '24. It's budgeted for $1.4 million in '25. The annual water line replacement, to this point, we've done about $2 million a year, which is really insufficient considering what we operate. So we have 800, roughly 865 miles of water lines throughout the city. This project will replace approximately 55,000 linear feet of water line, which equates to about 1.2%, and we've upped that amount to $7 million in '25 to be able to start replacing those water lines at a much higher rate. Water line, water transmission line rehabilitation, $100,025. The project will sandblast and repaint various water pipes crossing canals and ditches throughout the city. And I'm going to flip-flop these next two items. The raw water pump station, we're wrapping that up in '25. That's a new 45-million gallon per day pump station built at Colliers Ferry Park. And then the previous item, which I skipped over, is the raw water delivery line, which will then take that water from the new pump station, bring it to the Pine Street Water Treatment Plant, and allow us to process that. Large amount of the funds on this, as you can see from the pages, grant-funded. Lawson's Canal Maintenance Project. So the current Lawson's Pump Station. So the current Lawson's, uh, pump station, uh, pumps the water to the Pine Street Surface Water Treatment Plant by the Lawson's Canal. It used to be open water. It now is a pipeline that runs down that canal, which was damaged during Harvey. So this project, uh, resets that pipeline and also reconstructs, uh, the western levee of that. This is being done with FEMA, FEMA funds. Lead and Copper Field Investigation, the EPA and TCQ requiring service line inventory by October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, under the lead and copper rule revisions. So the first of these projects is the field investigation to determine both the city and the customer service line material. On this project, as well as a subsequent one, we have been working to submit for grants through Texas Water Development Board. Uh, we do, we're not successful last year. If we are successful, that's typically funded fifty-one percent, Texas Water Development Board, forty-nine percent city.
Bart?
Yes, sir.
It came up at a recent community, uh, neighborhood association meeting about these lead and copper surface lines. Apparently, uh, your department is going out and requesting voluntary, uh, citizens, uh, citizens to volunteer to be a part of this process. But it kind of presupposes that there are lead and copper lines in the city. And I think in my prior discussions with you, you had told me that you've never been able to identify, uh, any lead lines, uh, so far in Beaumont. Is that still true, or where are we on, on that?
We've been focusing our pilot investigations in areas of the city that we feel they're the older ones that would be most likely to have lead lines. To this point, we've identified one.
One lead line?
Service line. However, according to the rules that are set down by the EPA, it's not just lead lines themselves, but if you have galvanized lines that are in place, you either have to prove that they were never downstream of a lead line, or we're gonna have to replace those galvanized lines as well.
The one lead line that you've identified, what area of town is that? And how did that? I mean, what do we know about that?
We're still working through the, since we identified one, we're working through a, a process to set up a, a procedure to address that. It's a little complicated in the state of Texas because you can't normally just go onto private property, replace somebody's line. So we've set, um, some proposed guidelines to the city manager. He's given us feedback back. And we'll be coming to council here in, uh, the next few months and present what our procedures will be going forward as we discover lines, as well as ask you to, uh, adopt some ordinances that will help support the process.
At this point, is it safe to read into your comments that we really do not have, uh, problems with lead and copper lines in Beaumont, or?
Thankfully, it's a, it's a, seems to be a smaller scale issue, but, but again, the problem is that we're going to have to do the inventory regardless. So e- even if we found nothing, we would have to inventory everything throughout the city to definitively prove that we don't have it. And it looks at this point that our biggest issue as far as replacing lines is going to be those galvanized lines that we just simply can't find the documentation to definitively prove it was never downstream of a, of a lead line.
A- and we're being mandated to do this by the federal government?
Yes, EPA.
I suppose all communities are facing this?
Everybody. Nationwide.
And they, and they don't tell you how you're supposed to fund all these, uh, investigations and?
No, sir.
Okay, great.
I wish it came with funding. We all do. So the second part of this is the actual lead and copper service line replacement. Of course, we don't know what those levels will be, but for planning purposes, we estimated no more than five hundred to six hundred service lines requiring replacements, which was what is reflected here in this, in this budget. The lobe motor starter and electrical improvements, this goes back to the Harvey damage of the lobe groundwater plant. Uh, this finishes fixing that, but also puts improvements in place. So this will replace the motor starters, elevate the generator and motor starters above previous flood levels. And this will be a mix of FEMA funding as well as city funding to complete the project. The Orange Avenue Water Main Rehabilitation, this project will re, uh, renew or replace a section of twenty-inch cast iron water line crossing railroad tracks, specifically five railroad tracks, uh, that it goes under. We did repair a leak in twenty nineteen and, and we're trying to get this done before it blows again under those water line, under those, uh, railroad lines. The Pine Street Treated Water Resiliency Line, currently we have two water lines that come out of the Pine Street Plant that deliver finished water to the city. They're both very old. So what this project is doing, it is putting an additional transmission line from the Pine Street Water Treatment Plant and four isolation valves on, on those oth- other two lines that come from the plant. The new line will be fifty-four hundred linear feet, forty-two inches in diameter. What this will allow us to do, once we finish putting the third line in, is we'll be able to isolate those original two lines that come from the Pine Street Plant and then be able to shut them down for inspection, make sure what kind of shape they're in, and then be able to plan for the replacement of those if need be. And we'll see some projects tentatively plan in the cost of the replacement if needed. The Pine Street Water Production Plant Chemical Improvements, this project's actually wrapping up. We went through and we've created a punch list on that, so we should finish this out this year. It was a four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar project to add additional caustic storage to meet TCQ requirements, and we also replaced the polymer dosage system at the, uh, Pine Street Plant. The Pine Street Plant Water Production Chlorine Dioxide Injection. You actually approved this at the last council meeting. This will construct a new chlorine dioxide system to remove iron and manganese from the surface water. Uh, cost is two point seven million dollars. Pine Street Water Production Plant SCADA Improvements. Uh, this project began this year and will finish out next year. It will upgrade, uh, the SCADA system that runs that Pine Street Plant, both software and the PLC hardware in the plant. The Pine Street Plant Water Production South Basin Sludge Drain Rehabilitation. We have clarifiers that drop the solids out of the water at the plant. Those basins have to be drained every so often and then cleaned out. And that draining system has some issues with the, which this project will address, allowing us to be able to maintain those much easier. Currently, we're having to pump them out, uh, with a separate pump because of the drainage issues. The Storage Tank Rehabilitation at the prison, we're actually wrapping this project up currently. So it's seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar project, uh, be finished shortly and be back in operation. And then the next one's the Southwest Elevated Storage Tank, which is over there on Washington, six hundred and fifty thousand. That project is finished and the tower is in operation currently. Buns Canal Rehabilitation, so we pull water from, uh, above the saltwater barrier. It then goes through an open water canal called Buns Canal and then goes under the river. This project will provide for the design and construction of levee and canal repairs to that canal. Uh, it will remove sediment in the canal and, and reestablish the original design, uh, grade lines of it to ensure that we have optimal flow through that canal. Lobe Transmission Line Inspections, we have two, uh, transmission lines that come from the wells in Hardin County into Beaumont. Uh, there's approximately seven miles of transmission lines. This project will, uh, do a comprehensive comprehensive condition assessment of each of those lines. Both of them are old. One, the newest one was in the eighties and the original one was in the fifties. Pine Street Production Plant Generator Improvements. You've actually already approved us to put the PO in for this because it's such a long lead time on the equipment. But we own and maintain three generators at the Pine Street Plant. All three of them are required to operate in tandem to run the plant. This project replaces the oldest of them and the smallest of them. So it swaps a twelve hundred and fifty kilowatt generator out with a seventeen hundred and fifty kilowatt generator. Uh, the electrical analysis conducted in twenty-two recommended this replacement. Then we get into subsequent storage tank rehabilitations. We plan to rehabilitate the south elevated storage tank in twenty-five, uh, one point four five million. This will rehabilitate interior and exterior of that tank, which is located near Sabine Pass and Harriet Street. And then we move to the northwest elevated tank planned to be rehabilitated in twenty-seven at a cost of one point five five million. Dishman, we plan to rehabilitate in twenty-eight at one point six two million. And then to wrap up, um, this round of rehabilitation, for now, the lobe steel ground storage tank will be rehabilitated in twenty-eight at a cost of two million. The next project is new, the Lawson's Pump Station Embankment Repair. So at the same time, we investigated the Colliers Ferry Boat Ramp. We looked at the shoreline that's next to the Lawson's Pump Station. This project will repair and stabilize that shoreline, which is eroded away, approximately six hundred and ninety linear feet. We, our study of it showed substantial erosion. You can see the flooding going on now. We'll have to look at. But we actually did, uh, save the riprap from Riverfront Park when we did the bank stabilization that store that streets currently. This project will utilize that material to save costs. So we'll put it back on the river protect, protecting this bank. Southeast Texas Industrial Improvements. There's a large number of commercial industrial projects, uh, happening in the southeast part of the city. We've received multiple requests for, uh, utility improvements to be able to serve them. This project is, uh, looking to create development agreements with those developers and actually fund those improvements, uh, with their, their assistance, not our money. Yes, sir.
One of the things that I want to kind of go back to is where the Lawson's Pump Station is right now, and you've obviously been out there a lot.
Yep.
Mr. Williams, I don't know, we never did take our walk that we did, that we, you know, but, uh, if you've been down the road out there along the Nature's River, it's really pretty, uh, and I see grant opportunities offered by, uh, the state of Texas through their, uh, parks departments, where you can take and develop, uh, bike and riding trails and hiking trails. Have we ever looked at applying for grants to maybe improve that roadway? I know that right now there's a gate and it says, you know, not supposed to walk back here because we really don't like people walking pa- back to where Lawson's is, but I'm telling you, that is a real opportunity to provide a recreational quality of life project. It really not much expense because the road's already there. It's beautiful. I don't think most people even know about it in the city of Beaumont. So, uh, you eating all my candy bars? Okay, so is there something that we can do to, I think you and I need to walk, walk back there, Mr. Williams, so you can see what I'm talking about.
But we'll, we'll get to walking out.
Okay.
It's currently flooded, so don't, uh, try now.
Hey, Kenan, Kenan, I've actually walked with Mike before. I was kind of blown away. I do think we have an opportunity to kind of extend upon our riverfront with recreational activity. I, I actually agree with that, and I don't think it'd be as costly as as all of this other stuff.
The next project is Pine Street Fuel Storage Improvements, uh, for four hundred thousand and twenty-six. This is in conjunction with that new generator. This will serve all three generators, the new one plus two existing ones, and will allow us to have a full five days of fuel storage at the Pine Street Plant. Lobe Well One Replacement Project is projected for twenty-eight at two point three million to drill a new well, well pump, new discharge head and electric well motor. Existing Well One was constructed in fifty-eight and according to some testing in twenty-three is, um, projected to possibly be at the end of its lifespan. We're gonna do some additional inspections. This is a placeholder. If the additional inspections do show we need to drill a new well, this is the plan for it. If we find that we can rehabilitate the existing well, then we'll do that and then pull this project. The next projects are conditional, depending on what we find with the assessment of those two water lines that serve, um, the treated water from the Pine Street Plant. It's actually split into four projects because of the segments, but the Pine Street Water Line Replacement, one through four, is depending upon those inspections done after we install the additional water line out of the Pine Street Plant. So that's conditional future projects, depending on what we find. Pine Street Water Production Plant De-sludging, currently the, uh, clarifier basin sludge is discharged to the sewer collection system. This project will change that and it'll, and allow us to take that sludge, dry it out, and then transport it away instead of putting it into the sanitary sewer system. It's a future planned project at two point five eight five million dollars. Storage Tank Rehabilitation, the last tank, the lobe concrete ground storage tank. We have it in the future. It's okay for now, but it'll rehabilitate the interior and exterior of that concrete ground storage tank at the lobe ground treatment plant. And then the next two are the Tex dot, um, I-ten project. They've split it into two pieces, and so we have it split here as well. For the water lines that are going to be replaced or relocated, uh, by that I-ten construction. These projects are fully funded by Tex dot. No city funds, uh, are needed for them. And that completes it unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had my doubts, so I was gonna make it up here today. All right, let's move into the, uh, CIP for the wastewater. Uh, we'll go through each every one of these like we have been, uh, starting with the annual collection system renewal. Uh, the city of Beaumont operates, maintains seven hundred and forty-six miles of sewer, sewer lines, ranging from six inch to seventy-two inch. Uh, some of these lines were built in the fifties and exceeded their life expectancy. Uh, this will, this project will inspect approximately three to six percent of the system annually and also replace one to one point four percent of the collection system annually. Uh, the annual lift station improvements. Uh, we have seventy-seven lift stations throughout the city. Uh, this project includes rehabilitating and replacing pumps, motors, controls, and also we use this to help with clean deteriorated systems. The assessment of sewer collection system phase three. This was the LAN project that we've been working on the last three years. It's the final phase of it. Uh, it will be completed, uh, by the end of this budget year. Uh, this will give us some, uh, flow monitoring and also completion of a hydraulic model, uh, with our wastewater system. Uh, lift station electrical improvements. Uh, once again, we have seventy-seven lift stations. This project will update the outdated electrical controls on the systems at Piney Point Lift Station, Wall Lift Station, and also Mulberry Lift Station. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant digester blower replacement, uh, this is, oh, to main, um, this is to replace a hundred and fifty horsepower blower at the wastewater treatment plant. This project will be completed by the end of this fiscal year. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Effluent Pump Replacement. Uh, once again, this is effluent pump that, uh, pumps the wastewater or the treated wastewater from Cattle Marsh into the, uh, Outfall Ditch. Uh, this pump or this project will be completed again at the end of FY twenty four. Uh, the Wastewater Treatment Plant Generator and Electrical Control, uh, Improvements. Uh, this project's to replace electrical components of the primary control center and improve generator controls at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, so the new motor control center will be built into a prefabricated process control room. Uh, this project was warranted by the fire that we actually had at the RS building in the MCC one building. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks Pumps Replacement. Uh, once again, this project will be completed this fiscal year. It's to replace the ten million gallon per day or the ten MGD pump at the Ross Silver Station. Wastewater Treatment Plant Yard Piping Renewal. Uh, this project is to inspect and rehabilitate or replace yard piping at the wastewater treatment plant between the process units. Uh, it would also include two sections of trunk lines along the plant boundary. Uh, we have actually started, uh, into this project this fiscal year and looking to complete it in twenty five and twenty six. Uh, Twenty Third Street Sewer Trunk Line Rehabilitation. Uh, this project is to rehabilitate a forty eight inch concrete line downstream of the Twenty Third Lift Station. Uh, the first phase is this to repair a cavity in a junction box near the lift station. Uh, that will be done this fiscal year. Uh, the second phase will, uh, rehabilitate approximately eight hundred, or eight thousand, eight hundred linear feet of trunk line between the lift station, which is at Twenty Third and Laurel, uh, all the way to Washington Boulevard. Uh, Harriet Street, or excuse me, Harriet Lift Station Rehabilitation. Uh, this project will provide for replacement of electrical controls and pumps at the Harriet Street Lift Station. Uh, this project will start next year. Uh, Wall and Avenue C Lift Station Rehabilitation. Uh, this will also start, uh, fiscal year twenty five. This project will provide the construction of a new control building at Wall and Avenue C Lift Station and the installation of all new electrical equipment, new submersible sewage pumps and modification of the existing wet well structure. Uh, of course, the, the existing control equipment located inside the existing pit will be removed and salvaged. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant High Flow Station Monitoring System. Uh, this project will add flow monitoring equipment at our high flow station at the wastewater plant. Uh, it'll help us in aid in analysis during rain events. Uh, currently we do not have a flow monitoring system at the high flow. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Road Repairs. Uh, the roads inside the wastewater plant were constructed in the early nineteen fifties. The roads have reached the end of their useful life and are beginning to experience pavement failure. Uh, due to the major construction projects we've had going inside the plant, uh, the roads will receive an asphalt overlay and that will be coming up in, uh, next fiscal year or fiscal year twenty five. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Pond Three Rehabilitation. Uh, this project will remove accumulated soil solids, regrade the pond bottom and instill, install new aeration equipment in Pond Three at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, this one is, uh, scheduled to be possibly done in FY twenty seven. Uh, for future consideration, we have the Florida Avenue Interceptor Phase Two. Uh, the Florida Avenue Interceptor was constructed in nineteen forty seven. Phase two is approximately tw- uh, two thousand four hundred linear feet consisting of twenty one and twenty four inch concrete pipe. Uh, the, the interceptor itself extends from Florida Avenue Lift Station to University Drive. Uh, this project was initially due to the failing joints and large number of cavities and the existing concrete pipe causing infiltration of stormwater, interrupting service and increasing the number of overflows impacting the Florida Street Lift Station efficiency. Uh, Wetlands Outfall Pipe Support Reinforcement. Uh, this is a new project, uh, during some inspection that was done this year. Uh, the outfall piping are wooden structures, are wooden pilings, and we've noticed, uh, termite damage. So we had to, uh, go through and repair two of the pylons this year. And this project is, uh, will add a polymer protective concrete around the existing wood pylons. And there remain, there are twenty eight remaining pylons to, to rehab.
So Mike, was it only two? Uh, you, you say you got twenty eight left to kind of address?
Twenty eight left to do, correct.
And it's cement around it would protect it better?
Sure.
Okay.
We actually, uh, we seen, we caught two of the worst ones. We was able to get them fixed this year.
And none of them in danger of like collapsing anything that mattered to just, you just want to get.
We just need to get it fixed before they get there.
Got you.
Uh, of course, uh, as with the water, the southeast industrial improvements, uh, this new project. Um, it's, this project's to increase the sewer capacity in the southeast part of the city. Uh, due to the multiple requests from significant utility service in the area uh, that the existing infrastructure cannot supply. Uh, once again, developmental agreements are being sought after to where it be one hundred percent funded. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Activated Sludge Phase One. Uh, this is a future project that, uh, we have talked about and looked into to possibly set up a modular activated sludge, uh, facility at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, this would take some of the strain off of Cattle Marsh. Of course, this project is dependent upon the wastewater treatment plant master planning, uh, master plan project. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Chlorine Contact Chamber. Uh, so this project will consist of a full recoding of the contract, of the chlorine contact chamber walls in the treatment plant. It's also another future consideration. Uh, we do see some small deterioration in the walls, but, uh, nothing that needs to be addressed immediately. So we put this into a future need. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Drying Bed Rehabilit- Rehabilitation Phase Two. Uh, this project will reconstruct six of the existing sludge drying beds. Uh, that includes new concrete walls, media and under terrain piping. The existing beds are deteriorating. With this reconstruction of these six beds, the plant will have a total of ten newly renovated drying beds. Uh, we just completed four new drying beds within the last year. And of course, this is a future consideration. Uh, another future consideration is the wastewater treatment headworks degrider. This project will add a degrider system in front of the wastewater treatment plant to increase the life expectancy of the equipment at the plant. Uh, the degrider would, will remove small debris, uh, that increases wear and tear on pumps in the process of this unit. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant High Flow Detention Pond. Uh, this is another future project that was talked about. Uh, this project will add detention pond upstream of the wastewater treatment plant for additional capacity during heavy rain events. Uh, Wastewater Treatment Plant Pond Two Rehabilitation, once again, future consideration. Uh, it'll remove accumulated solids from the bottom, regrade the bottom of the pond and install new aeration equipment in pond number two. And of course, the, the last two are the Tex Dot Cardinal Interchange and the Eastex Interchange. Uh, these are the projects where, uh, the Tex Dot, through their construction, if they have to replace any of the sewer or move any of the sewer mains out of the way, and they're fully funded by Tex Dot. So, any questions? I know I kind of flew through that, so.
Thank you. Fabulous job. And Councilman Felschall.
Mike, more than once you and I have, um, went out and looked at situations where a rain event, water backing up in someone's home. The latest one I think you looked at was on Devon Street. That lady has had water back through her sewer thirty times since Harvey. She redid all of her piping fifteen thousand, so we know it's not her. My question, uh, this is an issue for us in Beaumont because of all the, the different components involved. I, I know there's lift stations in here. I know there's, uh, the high flow station, flow monitoring. Uh, there's a lot of things going on here. I guess, I, I'm, maybe I'm asking the question that there is no answer, but is there any resolution to this issue in Beaumont? Will we ever be able to address these issues for these people that have repeated problems? I know some rain events, I, what, I know any system can be overloaded with like a Harvey on Imelda, but I, these people that are suffering repeated failure, i- is there any resolution to that?
The thing, Councilman Felschall, is the very first project that we discussed with the annual collection system renewal. Uh, that project is the ones designed for replacing the deteriorated sewer, deteriorated sewer mains. Uh, that's the projects where we use for, uh, televising, cleaning, smoke testing. Uh, this particular project right here is the one that's where we go out into the system and we try to find these areas, uh, where the lines deteriorated, where, uh, the, the rainwater or the inflow and infiltrations penetrating in the sewer line, where it's filling sewer line up. Uh, like I said, that's where this project here is so important because that's where we get the funding for that to go and take care of these areas. Uh, now, the thing that we run into and when we say one particular area and don't want to pick on Devon Street, but like Devon Street or like some of the other areas where we have frequent calls from, um, you know, we go through an area like that. When I say we, sewer, the sewer collection, um, we go into areas like that. We know there's, you know, she's having problems. We televise, we, you know, we check the lines. We find any problems that we see, we repair it and we make sure that everything in that neighborhood is good. Well, once we determine that neighborhood is good, well, the citizen's still having problems and the question is why? Well, that neighborhood ties to a trunk line that ties to another neighborhood or may have ten more neighborhoods tied to it. And it takes us, it takes time for us to go through all the neighborhoods that are tied to the same line or the same trunk line or system that this one neighborhood's tied to. So it takes time and of course it takes money, you know, to, for us to go through, examine this, televise it, find the problems, fix the problems and, uh, and move on from there. So.
And, and the lady on Devon Street, she told me that every time she's called the city, they've always come out. And she, she spoke very highly of the city and was very complimentary. But again, when I'm talking to a citizen that's had water in their house thirty times since Harvey. And so before Harvey, there would never was, but since Harvey, it's, it's obvious there's a problem. And we know it's not her line because she replaced everything. It's just, I, that's, that, that, for me, that would just be, I, I couldn't tolerate that.
It'd be very frustrating.
I don't know what I would do. I, I, and I don't know what she's going to do. I mean, do you sell and move away or? I mean, how do you deal with water in your house thirty times in six years? And, uh, so I, I just, this is a repeated problem. I just, I guess I'm looking for hope that there is light at the end of the tunnel and, and the things you're mentioning eventually. I know we're always going to maintain the system, but surely w- we can get to a place where maybe this is less frequent.
Uh, and, and that's the, the important part to remember. Like I said, it's going to take time, uh, of course, but every, every year, every month, every day, we're moving forward, we're, we're replacing lines, we're, we're closing the system. So, I mean, I know you may not see relief or, or that particular person won't see it this week, next week, next month, but eventually we'll get to a point where we've got enough of the system closed that we can handle what rainwater gets in the system and we can get rid of it. So.
Thank you, Mike.
Councilman Turner.
And I understand we saying, you know, time and money, but from a support standpoint, Mike, uh, I think it would be good, time and money is great, but Mr. Williams, even if we can have a general idea of financially, even if it's a enormous number, because again, it's a consistent thing and we know what's going on, but at least the idea of how to kind of communicate with our citizens. I kind of speak to the same ones, similar to Councilman Felschall, you know, almost every ha- heavy rain event. And it's at the point to where, you know, it's just kind of redundant and repetitive. Does the water department go out, go out there? Of course they do. But, you know, it's still a ongoing problem where I've even had a senior citizen cry to me on the phone because she seen in the weather predicament that it was going to be heavy rainfall. And that's just a tough conversation to have. Sometimes with me, I'm having them at nine, ten at night. You know, if my wife don't tell me to put the phone down, it probably continues sometimes.
Well, I guess my poster Mike, I don't know, with the dollars built into this CIP proposal, I, I don't know the impact this will have on it or, or will there be additional dollars needed? Or, or assessments needed to come up with that answer?
One, one thing that Molly had just reminded me of, uh, we talked about Devon. Uh, one of the other projects we have here is that, uh, Twenty Third Lift Station, the rehabilitation of the forty eight inch line. That, uh, area where Devon is located goes to that lift station. So like I said, making an improvement of that as far as to be able to get rid of the, the wastewater faster also could help in, you know, alleviate some of the problems there. So like I said, there's things that we do that we try to help in certain areas that maybe the citizen doesn't see us in that neighborhood working on it. But like I said, we do work towards a solution. So.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to Streets. So the first item which we're wrapping up now is Fourth Street. Um, we do show this going in slightly to twenty five, but I think it'll probably wrap up, um, in twenty four. We just weren't sure, but that fully rehabilitated Fourth Street as well as restriped it. And so that ran all the way from Cardinal Drive to Ashley Street, the entirety of it. The Street Rehabilitation Program, the major change you're going to see here for twenty five is the jump in cost. And this is not to do additional miles of roadway. This is solely to address the inflation that we're seeing in all the material costs. Uh, so this is to keep the same pace that we've been keeping in order to get an overall improvement in the pavement condition index across the city. So it is, it is kind of a shocking number, but if we don't increase it, then we're going to start sliding backwards on that PCI. Just for example, we were dealing with eighty five dollars a ton for asphalt and we're up to, last I heard, two ten. Currently. The next project is for bridge repairs at various locations citywide. So this is to repair thirteen bridges that were found, uh, during the twenty twenty one bridge and spread inspections performed by Tex Dot. They're all listed within this, uh, this worksheet. You can read through them, but we're, uh, we're addressing those bridges citywide. Yes, sir.
Bart, going back to that asphalt, eighty five dollars to two ten. Is there a lack of competition locally?
There's only one plant currently. Go, um, the one vendor bought out, uh, L D here a while back. So there's, there's currently one plant operating.
Is, is that right that you quoted commensurate with what other locales are paying? Or are we getting taken advantage of by there only being one plant here?
I haven't really went and looked outside our area. Unfortunately, you can't buy outside the area because there's a limited range of transport to keep the product hot. So, uh, I really haven't looked. There, there are significant inflationary factors that are going on that are outside the vendor's control. We could be suffering some from lack of competition, but I, I don't know that.
Okay.
We do have two, two or more concrete vendors, so we have options there. Everything's just gone through the roof.
A lot of it depends on price of rock or the price of petroleum. Oh, it's kind of what it's doing.
Yeah, aggregate's gone up a lot, too. We don't have rock here and it's got to get transported. And so that aggregate cost has gone up. That's another one that's, that's, we've since seen significant inflation figures on. The next item for sidewalk repair, so as y'all know, we're doing Beaumont United this year. We continue that program from twenty-five through twenty-nine into the future to address improvements and repairs to sidewalk infrastructure throughout the city. Hopefully, we can get that sidewalk master plan funded as well, and then that'll give us some guidance as far as specifically where to apply the money.
Without the sidewalk master plan, how do you plan to proceed with determining what sidewalks are going to be addressed in the next fiscal year?
We're doing desktop assessment around schools, and we'll try to evaluate the areas that we get the most bang for our buck to put cohesive pedestrian systems in place around a half mile radius of those elementary schools. But I'd really like to have the, the master plan to guide us more specifically.
I need to reemphasize that we have two high schools in Beaumont. The larger the two is Westbrook, and there is no sidewalk all the way from Major to Dallin.
Correct. There's a sidewalk from the school itself down to Major, but not extending past.
Exactly. And so there are components, pieces of sidewalk because of our more recent requirement that new businesses put sidewalks in. What we really need to do is to link that all up so that you can have a continuous sidewalk from Major all the way down to Dallin. Because there are an awful lot of kids that walk that because of the apartments, the townhouses, the garden homes back there. They, they need to have a sidewalk just as much as any other high school in the city. So instead of spending a lot of time on desktop assessments of, you know, sidewalks that really won't end up going anywhere, I mean, they go half a mile out of the school. But this is, this is an identified need already, and you can see it every day just sitting in my front yard and talking to the kids as they go by.
Yes.
My boy, I have, I have a question because on, on that poll I did, I think right at the youth sidewalk and connectability was one of the second most talked about topics. And even with the million dollar budget, I know you can only cover so much ground with a million dollars a year realistically.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's just being totally transparent and honest. Other cities that have been doing sidewalks and connectability, what are they doing? Is it just, are they going out for buns? Are they, are they getting grant money? Like what, what, what have you seen or what have you guys seen successful in other places? Because I, you can only cover so much, like even the Beaumont United front, like with the, the wants and needs and the expectations of people. Even the Beaumont United front, you're spending a million bucks and that's just the Beaumont United sidewalk. There's not a lot of space at all.
And everybody's pretty much in the same boat we are. I, I did look at Dallas, which has a sidewalk master plan, and they have a much bigger need for sidewalks citywide, and they've more coherent. They pin down exactly what their dollar amounts are, but really, when you take their size and scale it down to us, they have the same problem. They've got too little funds for too, too much of a need for sidewalks. So I think the best we can do is continue to look for grant funding, which we're, we're trying. It's hard for sidewalks, but we have put in for grant funding for sidewalks, and we'll continue to look for additional funding for those. And then just try to get a master plan to allow us to pin down the most needed areas of the city that the community would like us to address first.
Yeah, and I know you did come to us last budget season with a sidewalk master plan, you know, request.
Yes.
And I, I do support it, but I know what it takes to get there. And I know there's only so much as a council we can do. That's why, you know, Kenny did it at the point where we're kind of at the same conversation from last year. We need to probably make some tough decisions about funding moving forward. You know, everybody wants it, but we're going to have to figure out ways to actually show the community how we can get it. And it, it may cost us some things that a lot of people don't want to discuss, but that's almost where we at with the needs of our community.
And Molly reminded me that if we have a sidewalk master plan, a lot of these grant submissions give you better credit if you have a plan.
I supported him, Molly.
So we'll have a, we'll have a better shot if we do have a plan to back us up. So our next project, we start getting through some other major named roads. So we're projecting to address Highland Avenue, starting in twenty-five. That's from US sixty-nine to Euclid, ten thousand five hundred linear feet. That'll address all of Highland Avenue over twenty-five and twenty-six, a four-point-six million dollar project. The next one's Avenue A, which we're projecting for twenty-six, twenty-seven at a cost of two million dollars from Washington to College, six thousand linear feet. The next project is the Calder Avenue Bridge Replacement and Widening. So the bridge over the Hill de Brande Bayou was constructed in nineteen forty-eight. It's a concrete flat deck bridge, twenty-three feet, four inches wide. So allows about twenty-two feet of width for travel. This project would remove the existing structure, replace it with a forty-foot wide structure that would also include protected pedestrian passage across Hill de Brande. The next one is Hill, Highland Avenue over the Ellen V A. It's a concrete slab bridge, twenty-five feet wide, that has a lot of structural issues that was actually identified during those T, Tech dot Bridge inspections. This would remove the existing structure, replace it with a twenty-eight foot wide structure over the Ellen V A. And would allow for wider traffic lanes and a shoulder on each side. The next project is Broadway, projected for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, six thousand linear feet from M L King Junior Parkway to Eleventh Street. This would do an asphalt overlay along that length. The next one is Park Street in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, two-point-seven-five million from M L King to College. That's forty-eight hundred linear feet, would include curb and gutter repairs as well as asphalt overlay. Next one's in Old Town. It's Pecos Street from Jaguar to Seventh. This would replace it from Seventh to Third Street. There's a lot of pavement failures under there, thirty-five hundred linear feet. A major drive at Northwest Parkway traffic signal. We've had a lot of conversation about this over the years. We're looking at obtaining some property through eminent domain, but this is to actually put the signal in. Since we don't know where that property acquisition falls, this is our best guess as to time, timeframe to put it in. The traffic network fiber replacement, this is a project we put in for the I T department. We have some aerial fiber optic cable stringing along College String, College Street. This takes it and replaces it and puts it below ground. So it should, our below ground installed fiber lasts a lot longer. And then the next ones, and this is in future. It's a collection of streets, Hoover Street, Dollinger, Cottonwood Avenue, and Seventh Street. These are in really bad shape, and in looking at it, we at least wanted to get the conversation started on replacing those in the future. The next one is Carroll and Sycamore Street. That's a section of Sycamore and Carroll from Buford to Fulton, and we've got that in the future at one-point-nine million. Then Dusette Avenue, also in future for one-point-five-five. That's from Sycamore Street to Van Buren. East Lucas is future for eight-hundred thousand from Magnolia to Pine. This is the two-lane, smaller section of Lucas that hasn't been addressed as of yet. This will also widen it some. It's a fairly narrow roadway currently. Gladys Street, three-point-eight-five million in future from I-ten to Edson. Jim Gilligan Roadway, future one-point-seven million from M L King to Jimmy Simmons. Nature Streets in future, two-point-six-five million from M L King to College. And that is it. Unless you have questions on streets? Yes, sir.
Councilman Turner?
When you, when you have a, a project that can be impactful like that, East Lucas project for that small amount, smaller, well, I wouldn't say small amount, but smaller amount what we're normally spend, is it a reason we kind of have it in future consideration versus kind of having it up on the list when the amount isn't that, you know, large compared to what we normally spend?
Well, other than it being narrow, it's not in terrible shape right now. I don't have the PCI in front of me, but we typically look at the drivability of the road and we'll try to address the roads we feel they're rougher shape first. That's really not all that terrible road, although it is narrow on there.
I just, just was curious when I seen that number in comparison to the way all the numbers normally be. That's why I asked the question.
Yes, sir. We'll move to drainage then unless we have to close due to time. What, we good?
I'd say we press ahead.
Okay. So in drainage, we have citywide ditching program that will continue into twenty-five at three-point-three million. So this is the program that we've put in place to ditch. All the ditches citywide over a five-year span is what our goal is, and then reset any culvert that's more than three inches out of grade. So we're doing twenty percent of each ward each year is, is what our, our ambition is for that. So that continues that program. The Laura, these next two are, are actually grant funded to the extent of a million dollars. The first one is Laura Edition Drainage. The streets that make up Laura Edition are Chamberlain, Teresa, Bun, and I'm not sure if it's Amy or Amy. But the drainage was in need of improvement in this area. We put in for grant funding. We obtained a million dollars in grant. Total project is one-point-seven-five million. This is under the twenty-nineteen disaster H M I D competition. And under that same competition, we also put in for Phelps Road, which is the next one. This project is slightly running behind the other one because we had to appeal an initial finding that we weren't awarded. This is a one-point-three million dollar project. It addresses drainage on Phelps Road from Fennett to Terrell Park Road. We're getting a million dollars of that one-point-three from that grant competition. Stormwater pipe inspections, point repairs, and data asset management. So we have four-hundred-and-twenty-one miles of stormwater lines underground. I'm sure y'all are well aware, after we had the Long Street collapse, and we also had the Lucas Gladys emergency point repair. This program's trying to get ahead of the curve and actually inspect major lines, find problems and address them before we have a, a large number of, of collapses or cavities. Unfortunately, they've gotten ahead of us a little bit this year, but we're continuing this program into twenty-five to inspect and then address point repairs throughout the system. We're also going to be collecting storm sewer data and import that data into G I S in order to better analysis, analyze, and assess the storm drain system citywide. And on that note, Long Avenue Storm Sewer Repair, we had to address it on an emergency basis. It wrapped up this year. It ended up being seven-point-three million. It, we did the large point repair. We injected grout to fill all the cavities along that line from Pine to M L K. And then we also put a new grout lining, basically a new line inside the old line along that length. West Lucas Drive Storm Sewer Rehabilitation. This is to rehabilitate Lucas, the Lucas Storm Line. It's twelve thousand linear feet. It's an aluminized steel line that's failing along that length. And this is to completely rehabilitate that line. The total cost is going to be fifteen-point-five million. What we're projecting for twenty-five is to go ahead and go in and do the grout injection and fill all the cavities and hopefully buy us some time to avoid a problem like we had at Lucas and Gladys. And then come back in twenty-six and fully line, do the additional point repairs and fully line Lucas. And the last one, which is new, is the annual underpass pump station improvements. As y'all know, we've been fighting the rebuilding of the Royal Pump Station pumps. This is to try to put some additional capital money into our underpass pump stations on a more proactive basis and address things before we run into failures. And that is it unless y'all have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is fiscal year twenty-twenty-five golden priorities of the mayor and city council members. This is where I'd like to hear from each council member of any priorities you might have. I think we've heard some already during this morning, so today's discussion. So we, we're ready to take those in as we and department has worked on their budget. They're able to build things into their particular budget for your goals and priorities as, as needed or as we are able to afford. So maybe if we can just kind of do a round table from each member.
Mr. City Manager, if I may, we had a couple more slides on the PowerPoint. Ms. Ray had a couple of things she wanted to talk about. Do you want to cover those or just continue?
We can cover them as a C I P.
Yeah, C I P related.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to go over a few issues. Dealing with the C I P, we are going to need to go out for the water sewer bonds, and I think I had mentioned it on, at the previous meeting. But I wanted to discuss it in further detail. The last bond issue in twenty-twenty-three was for twenty-five million. It was a twenty-five-year amortization and payments of approximately one-point-five million per year. So every five million borrowed now adds about three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in revenue to pay the debt with higher interest rates that we're currently experiencing. So we're going to need to go out for a bond issue of about sixty million in June in order to have the money to fund the twenty-four and twenty-five projects that we have. And this is also in alignment with the burn rate spreadsheet that's prepared by Public Works. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that's the kind of financing we're looking at. The next slide, please. So in our water sewer revenues, about a one percent rate increase equals about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand in revenue. So point-six percent equals that three-hundred-and-thirty in revenue that we're looking for. And so we would be looking at, these are the different rate increases. Five million, a point-six rate increase is about 5 million, a 0.6 rate increase is about 50 cents more a month on a water bill. 10 million, one, 1.2% increase, about a dollar per month. So if you go, you know, based on this, a 60 million would be approximately $6 a month difference on the water bill in order to fund those revenue bonds. So it's going to cost each citizens around $6 to pay for all of those improvements that hopefully will, you know, alleviate a lot of the problems that are occurring. Also looking at our tax revenues, a one cent increase at this time is about 930,000 in revenue. So a third cent tax rate increases $310,000 in revenue. So if we looked at 2 cent, revenue would be $30 million in bonds. That's about $18.60 a month, I'm sorry, per year that a citizen would pay additionally. We're going to have to go out for a bond issue again in, you know, coming up this, early this next fiscal year to fund the additional COs that we're going to need, which are approximately $30 million. So if we go up 2 cents on the tax rate, that would pay for those bonds. So that's the math to do all the improvements that we need to do in the CIP for 2024 and 25.
Yes.
So that's going up $6 for somebody that uses 6,000 gallons per month, right?
Correct.
So what's the average water bill, 6,000 gallons?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Getz.
There are some state restrictions on how much we can go up on our tax rate. Is that right?
Correct, yes, sir.
And how does that fall into us with this chart that's in before us right now?
Well, we don't have those numbers yet. We can go up three and a half percent from where we are this year in total revenue. So I think that we would easily be within that amount.
And one thing I want to add, Mr. Getz, is that three and a half percent Ms. Ray mentioned, that is on the O and M side of the tax rate. So you have the O and M portion and the debt portion. There is no cap on the debt portion.
Right.
All right.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thanks for the great news, Jim.
Okay, back to you, Mayor.
All right, at this point, I have an individual council input. And I will start. Councilman Durio, are you ready to share any, you have anything to share at this point, I should put?
No, they covered just about everything that I had questions about for our streets and parks and different things like that. So good.
Any initiatives that weren't mentioned that you would like to see looked at? I mean, I guess we can also follow up with emails as well, but.
I follow up with emails.
Okay. Councilman Getz?
Thank you. Everything that I had on my list, we've talked about at some point, but I just want to reiterate the priorities that I have right now are construction of sidewalk from Major to Dowlin, but also from Daisy to Phelan. We did put a sidewalk down most of Dowlin, but we stopped at Daisy. It needs to go all the way to Phelan. It's just a few more blocks, but it's important to finish that out. We talked about the food truck park and I greatly appreciate that being included in the budget for starting design and construction this coming fiscal year. I think that will do a lot to start bringing people downtown. And it's, it's really kind of low hanging fruit for the bank that will get for a buck on that. I appreciate greatly, Mr. Williams, you're embracing the bandit sign pickup. I think that will enhance the attractiveness of our city in many, many ways. And I think it'll have other positive effects in citizens' self-image of the city. And it, it, it will go well. I've already expressed my concerns about downtown and impediments that we have to downtown rehabilitation that need to be addressed. And the idea of the recreational centers, I appreciate your willingness to reach out to the YMCA and see if there's any desire at all for them to come back into Beaumont because that was a model that served us very well for many, many years. And maybe it's time to re-explore that relationship. Thank you.
Councilman Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. For me, my top priorities that I like to see the city focus on is youth initiatives. I think right now, one of our major problems in the city of Beaumont is no secret. We have one rec center in a city of roughly 116,000 people. You know, the cities with half our population is with a rec center or Y almost in every ward. So, you know, going forward, I think there's no problem allowing the voters to decide on if that's something they want in their community from polls and neighborhood associations and things in the counties I have with the community. That's one of the things that they mostly are concerned about. And with the programming, it's not just sports. It's youth internships. It's literacy programs where kids can have assistance reading. It's financial programs where kids can understand banking. It's can be mental programs where kids can actually have someone to talk to about some of these mental issues. We've said time and time again in our community that it's on the parents, it's on the parents, it's on the parents, it's on the parents. And that response unfortunately hasn't given us a solution because these kids can't control the situation and environments they're brought into, unfortunately. Another thing I'm very concerned about is sidewalk and connectability throughout the entire city. I think it's very important, if you're putting funding towards something, it's, it's just important to know the plan of what direction the funding is going in. I think it's great we're putting the funding up for it, but you know, staff kind of, to a certain extent, shooting from the hip about where, where what's going. We brought this up last budget season, it didn't quite make it, but we have funding to support special events. And it doesn't have to be a lot of funding. If we noticed in our most recent community block grant meeting, we had multiple events such as Murafest, was that was almost at the point to where we'd be willing to pull out. And we also had events such as 409 Day and Mardi Gras that all came for that grant funding that's supposed to bring in tourism. I think one of the most positive things we can do in Beaumont is control what we can control, which is quality of life, which won't cost us a significant amount of money. These are small, low hanging fruit things, but quality of life is one of the positive aspects in Beaumont, especially when it comes to events bringing all parts of the community together. Another thing that came up through people that I spoke to about budget season is, I know we spend a million dollars a year on fire trucks. I just want to know if that's something that's necessary? Do we have to do a million a year? Can we do every other year? Or, you know, what is the, the plus of doing a million a year? Because I know we only have so many fire stations. And I know most of our firing miss calls from experience is 25% of those cause, you know, major fires. They brought up the police department having the little small vehicles to cut costs versus the Tahoe's. And I figured out, you know, if we could figure out a way to balance that out to see if maybe, if we don't spend that excess money, maybe some of that money can go towards, you know, putting officers in more safer vehicles and incentives for public safety to live in the city of Beaumont. When you have 75% of your fire department that works here but lives outside of here, that's a huge concern for me as a council member, especially when we're speaking as reference to being fiscal conservative. Because we're paying out debt, which is 60% of our budget with fire and police, but 75% firefighters and 64% police officers, you know, we appreciate our public safety, but that revenue is not coming back as far as property tax. And if we can figure out a way to incentivize some of them, especially with it being 60% of the budget, I think they'll be very beneficial. Spraying noodle programs for animals, that's another low hanging fruit one that don't cost a lot of money, but that came across. And the last thing is who is responsible for accountability with the budgets? So we make sure we don't make mistakes or have situations similar to the water situation we just had with over $500,000. Some funding sources that I thought of in reference to these things that I'm speaking of. Currently, we have a contract with a grant writer. I don't know how successful that is, but I'm interested to see if the return on investment, having a grant writer on staff may be more beneficial. We kind of discussed it last term, but if, if, if we pay someone to do it in-house, maybe we, we can touch them more, they're more accessible. And I think we get a better return on our investment. Economic development, currently, right now, most cities have an EDC. We don't have that unfortunately. We do, we, we attempt to do our economic development through the chamber, but we need to do a real analyst to see if that's beneficial for the city of Beaumont. Maybe we need our own economic development person or some form of a department to be a true headhunter and go out there and target those businesses that we would like to see come in our community and increase the tax base. We discussed the street and parkland enterprise funds, the fees for a street user fee. You know, a lot of our population, was it 67% of the workforce working in Beaumont, but not living in, not living in Beaumont? And we can figure out a way to capitalize on maybe a street user fee or something to that magnitude over to supplement the income that's traveling outside of our city. And lastly, this is something that's free. Some young people asked me this at Beaumont United, Lemoine University and Westbrook for a youth initiative task force. Basically, young people coming together, saying some things that they would like to see happen in our community and, you know, just coming up with ideas and things they could just tell us. And the veteran task force is the other one that came up. And I went to a veterans meeting, they just said they don't feel like we, we, we do, did do a good thing with the bus passes, but they just wanted an outlet, you know, where veterans can kind of talk about things that they think we can do better in the city. So I know my list is long, but can it, you know, I, I've been talking to a lot of people and I promised them I would bring these things up. Of course, all of them can't be funded. I'm fully understanding of that. But low hanging fruit and things that we can do for free, I would like to be supportive of that. And I really like to see the process of our program and recreationally. I like to see, you know, what's the budget for it? What's the plan for it? And how do we plan on execute it moving forward?
Councilman Phil Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, most of my issues were, were addressed. I appreciate the fact that you mentioned a zero-based budget because I'm always going to look for a balanced budget and a healthy fund balance, of course. So I appreciate that. I talked about the sewer backup, sidewalks are addressed, downtown development. These are things that, of course, that I'm looking at. One of the things we didn't talk about, and it deals with public health and quality of life, and that is a homeless problem in Beaumont. My frustration is, is I don't have the answer. I don't have the solution. I know Councilman Getz has been, he's got more information about this than I do, but I just wanted to bring that up and keep it on the radar for the council that we've got to find, we've got to find a solution. But I'm assuming that's going to require money to be budgeted to address that issue. But I, that's an issue that's not going away and it continues to be a problem. And then I have a question. Talked a little bit about Beaumont PD and, and this is a question I don't know. But it was brought to my attention that the patrol cars, the vehicles our officers are driving, driving are aging. I'm assuming we have a program where we rotate them in and out on a regular basis. I, I don't, I know you can't answer that now, but wanted to bring that up because it was brought to my attention that evidently there are those who believe that our fleet is not being maintained at the rate it should be. And again, that costs money. But just perhaps getting some information on how often do we rotate those cars? What condition is our fleet in? And are we staying on top of that or are we falling behind? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Samuel? Your mic.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say, you know, I don't think I heard a bad idea discussed today. I think that they're all great projects for us to strongly consider moving forward with. But at the end of the day, it really all boils down to revenue and expenditures. So I'm real anxious to see Mr. Williams on when you're going to give us some preliminary predictions on, on what we're going to be bringing in this year.
All right, and certainly I appreciate much of what I was considering has already been discussed as well. A couple of things to bring up and since Madam City Attorney's here, I know one of our pauses on the homelessness is waiting on a Supreme Court decision that at one point was possibly going to be this summer regarding the primitive campsites. And maybe we can get an update on that because certainly we didn't want to proceed if we were going to be running into some increased revenue expenses. But I'm going to just throw back out there, as I said earlier, about extended hours at Sterling Pruitt Center. And on youth initiatives, I know there's some current existing programs such as over at Charlton Pollard Park that I recently got to tour with mentoring and after school programs. It's extremely successful and they have a lot of data on that. And of course, they get a lot of grant money. They do get some city money, but it's pretty limited. But in terms of if we're going to be, there's no point in recreating the wheel, utilizing existing programs that are highly effective in our city right now, I think would be something worth looking to partner at. I'm very excited about the master plans for the park and sidewalks. I think master plans are the key because as council changes every, you know, every few years, directions can change. But if you, if you have a good roadmap, that's not, can, it can make a big difference. And clearly, we've got lots of needs. We've, and our CFO explained to us about cost, you know, our costs are going up at a increasing rate more than our property taxes. And if we're going to be able to stay on top or even move beyond where we currently are, we're going to have to spend money in those areas. And that's just something we're going to have to be mindful of if we want to be able to solve these problems. And last, Persons with Disability Task Force, we had one at one time working with the state. Look at bringing that back. I know there's been some interest on that. And with that, am I leaving anything off the agenda that I'm not looking at right now?
I should think council, unless council, you have other comments. Just a couple of closing comments. We have a calendar which you'll be provided with this week. Staff will be submitting their first draft of budgets and getting that in. Then finance will start doing their budget reviews. We're going to have a second budget workshop, May 23rd with council. So you'll get to get the budget items and get some feedback from, from staff on some key issues. And I guess I'll jump all the way to July 23rd. There'll be a third budget work session, special meeting if we need it with council, depending on if we need it. And about the second, we should have a proposed budget to start working with and to, to get posted by the city clerk at that time. Thank, thank you, council. Thank you for your feedback. Thank you for your comment. I'd like to thank staff for their work, Cheryl, Ryan, her staff and Amy and June and everyone for putting all that together and staff for what you're doing. We appreciate what you do. We, we do all the talking, we get the public, but they do the work. So we thank them for the work that they do. They do an outstanding job. So we look, look forward to going through that process with them this year. So thank you and thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you. And with that, the meeting is closed.